Good evening. Welcome to the April 26 meeting of the Glendale City Council. Role call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Garpetyan.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian. Mayor Devine.
Thank you. Flags salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Friedman. Please stand.
I invite you to please rise and join me in our pledge to the flag.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America. Republic of which stands. And which is God. And your results. Let the Christian justice.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. This past Sunday, tens of thousands of Americans of Armenian descent, whose ancestors were victims of the first modern genocide of the 20th century, the Armenian genocide, marched in commemoration of this tragedy. Similarly, many of our Jewish brothers and sisters continued to observe the holiday of Passover this week, and certainly kept in their minds and hearts the memory of their relatives lost in the Jewish Holocaust. As we watch the deserts of Syria and parts of the Middle East once again become the source of human suffering and genocide at the hands of terrorist groups and villains, let us pray for the memory of all innocent lives lost, and for those who risked their lives to save others during these times. Each person who remembers those who fell is here because of the kindness of another human being. Let us remember that light will defeat darkness, and pray that love will always conquer hate. We pray that our city continues to be a place that welcomes those who seek shelter and who try and escape tyranny. We pray for those in our armed forces who defend our values as Americans and serve our nation away from their families. May they be washed over and kept from harm. We pray for peace all over the planet, and in our lifetime, tonight and always. Amen.
Mr. Pisaki, in your report, please.
The agenda for the April 26, 2016, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed Friday, April 22, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
You. Next item?
Next item is presentation and appointments. At 3A is Agenda Preview for the meetings of Tuesday, May 3, 2016.
Ms. Spears?
Mayor Devine, members of the City Council, for May 3, at 2:00 p.m., we have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council. This is Director of Finance, and this will be our first budget study session, and again it will commence at 2:00 p.m. That afternoon, we have no Glendale Housing Authority business agenda items. We do have a Glendale Successor Agency meeting, Director of Community Development. This is the third revision to the successor agency's long-range property management plan, modifying the designate designated of the 300 East Broadway public parking lot. That evening, for the council meeting to commence at 6:00 p.m., Director of Public Works, this is regarding consulting services to provide recycling and waste reduction, marketing outreach, and event coordination, survey data collection, and analytical services to improve recycling program participation within the city of Glendale. Director of Community Development, this is an amendment to a professional services agreement with JAS Pacific, and appropriation of funds. Under adoption of ordinances, we have an ordinance, this is Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and this is relating to landscape standards involving artificial turf. Under action items, we have two items. Director of Community Development, this is regarding an award of contract for the Glendale Dial-A-Ride operations. And lastly, Glendale Community Development Department, this is regarding the North Brand rezoning. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, at 3B is Proclamation Regarding Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Right, and this is for the Commission on the Status of Women, so Chair Burns. Evening.
Good evening.
Do you introduce your fellow commissioners?
Well, I'm joined here this evening by my fellow commissioners, Vice Chair Sedeka Joyan, Diane Lambalot, and Arminé Perian, and student ex officio Pauline Serrano. I guess I should say good evening to you all. Congratulations.
Thank you.
My name again is Linda Burns, and I'm Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women. Sexual Assault Awareness Month is a time for us to reflect on how sexual assault affects every part of our community, and we need to be able to talk about what is going on if we're going to take action to stop sexual assault. The statistics are presented in the proclamation, which will be read momentarily, and so I want to take this time to ask City Council and the community to join the commission tomorrow, Wednesday, April 27, to wear denim. As you can see, we're all wearing denim in anticipation of Denim Day tomorrow, and even we have cowboy boots.
See, styling.
Twenty-six years ago, in Italy, a 45-year-old woman driving instructor raped an 18-year-old girl during her very first lesson. Though he threatened to kill her if she told anybody, she tells her parents, and together they press charges. The perpetrator is arrested, prosecuted, and convicted of rape, and sentenced to jail. He appeals the case all the way to the Italian Supreme Court, and within a matter of days, the case is overturned, and the perpetrator is released. The reason provided by the courts was because the victim wore very, very tight jeans. She had to help him remove them, and by removing the jeans, it was no longer rape, a consensual sex. Within hours, the enraged women in the Italian Parliament launched into immediate action and protested by wearing jeans to work. This call to action motivated the California Senate and Assembly to do the same, which then spread to peace over violence, and thus Denim Day in Los Angeles was born. The first Denim Day in Los Angeles was in April 1999, and has continued every year since. Peace Over Violence, a nonprofit violence prevention organization that the Commission has supported for years, leads the Denim Day efforts. Please watch this short public service announcement for Denim Day.
I'm Maya Jupiter.
I'm Allo Black.
It's time to gear up and become part of the movement to end sexual assault.
I promise to take action by wearing jeans on Wednesday, April 27, as a visible means of protest against sexual assault.
I promise to be the person who stands in support of survivors and educates herself and others about sexual violence.
Will you make the Denim Day promise?
We invite you. Gear up and join us on Wednesday, April 27.
There is no excuse and never an invitation to rape.
Make the promise at DenimDayInfo.org.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the United States government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the Glendale Commission on the Status of Women, in collaboration with Peace Over Violence, has declared April 27, 2016, as Denim Day in the Los Angeles region, and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, and statistics show that one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. Child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one of our four, one in four girls and one in six boys will experience a sexual assault before age 18. Whereas with proper education, there is compelling evidence that we can successfully reduce the incidence of this physically and psychologically damaging crime. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day are intended to draw attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault are serious issues in our society, we're instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault, and the problem that many in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of assault and forcible rape, allowing these crimes to persist, and victims and survivors to be victimized. And whereas prevention is possible when everyone gets involved, to increase education, awareness, and community involvement, and to take action to create a safer environment for all. And whereas the members of the Glendale City Council strongly support the efforts of the City of Glendale Commission on the Status of Women, in collaboration with Peace Over Violence, to educate people in our community about the true impact of rape and sexual assault, and what can be done to prevent it. Now, therefore, I, Paula Devine, Mayor of the City of Glendale, hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and designate April 27 as Denim Day in Glendale, and urge everyone to wear jeans tomorrow, tomorrow, to spread the message that there is no excuse and never an invitation to rape.
Thank you.
And I'm very proud to present this, since the Commission on the Status of Women is from whence I came. Very much for all. Bye. Nice job, ladies. Thank you.
At 3C is Appointment of Board and Commission Members. This was a nomination reserved for the mayor and council. It was made on April 12, 2016. It is, C1, is for Jerry Walton to be appointed to the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District Board.
Okay, and so I would like to move this appointment of Jerry Walton. He happens to be an employee of the City of Glendale. He's an Assistant Code Compliance Inspector, and this is an interesting appointment, because I feel that with this position on the vector board, he can bring information back to the city to combat the threats to public safety. So I would like to move his nomination. Second. Role call?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian. And Mayor Devine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item?
Next on the agenda is Consent Calendar. Consent items including may not fall under a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
I have no cards on these items. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Role call?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian. Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item?
Item five on the agenda is City Council and Staff Comments.
Ms. Friedman?
Yes, I received an email from a group called the Los Angeles Area Helicopter Noise Coalition asking that we discuss a passing a resolution that would basically ask for legislation to reduce unnecessary helicopter noise. This would be not law enforcement, not fire, but to try to regulate the numerous news helicopters that sometimes will crowd around a news event, or helicopters that will fly low over neighborhoods to shoot film or whatever they're doing. So I would like to bring that back, if there's a second, for us to discuss passing the resolution. As someone who gets a lot of complaints from residents about noise of helicopters flying over their houses, I would love to find a way to try to address some of that. Do I have anybody who's interested in bringing that back?
I'll second that.
Okay. And then, secondly, I want to congratulate the community for the number of events surrounding the Armenian genocide recognition this last weekend. I also want to apologize for not being able to attend the ones at the Alex on Friday night or on Saturday night here in Parker Plaza, but it being Passover, I was at a home seder on Friday night, and at Temple Sinai for their community seder on Saturday night. And at the same time, I want to congratulate Temple Sinai for a really beautiful and wonderful and well-attended community seder. I think they had well over 100 people, and it was really a joy to participate. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Anyone else? Mayor, or...
I can go next.
Mr. Garpetyan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to mention that I attended almost every event related to Armenian genocide. There was six of them organized, and there was, the first one was from the Glendale, the GUSD, Glendale High School, Armenian Clubs, they come together and host an event, which was a very emotional one for me, because there was a survivor there, 101-year-old lady, and that event was a great event. I want to thank the school district for accommodating the kids to be able to host such a large event. I also like to thank City of Glendale for hosting the event at the Alex every year. I think this was our 15th year, if I'm not mistaken, as well as the candlelight vigil at the Partridge Plaza. This was the first year that it was done in Partridge Plaza. It was well-attended. ABC News, Channel 7, I believe, was, said it was, there was 11,000 people. I don't know about 11,000, but I think what, 7,000 or 8,000 attended. It was well-attended. Also, attended the event at Monobello, and the march on the day of the April 24 in Little Hollywood, as well, Little Armenia in Hollywood, as well as the protests in front of the Turkish Embassy. And this was all done, and it sent yet another message that we still demand justice. Also like to thank staff, especially Dan Bell, for organizing these events in Glendale. They're not easy to do, and Dan did a great job. Thank you, Dan. With that, at the interest of time, Madam Mayor, I'm done for today. Thank you.
Councilman Najarian? Nothing? Staff? No? I reiterate what Mr. Garpetyan has said, but I also want to thank, or congratulate, Councilmember Najarian and Sinanian, for they were the co-chairs for the commemoration at the Alex Theater, and I have to say, it was one of the best that we've had. It was quite wonderful. I also wanted to just mention that I hope everyone saw the Sunday LA Times and the huge article on Porto's, Betty Porto, and the bakery. It was really, really kind of fun to open the paper and see her smiling face there, and I'm sure that now she has probably about another million people that are coming to Porto's here in Glendale because of that article. But kudos to the Portos. They've always been so generous to this community, dealing with the organization, so congratulations to them on that great article. Next item?
Next item is Community Event Announcements. This is the three-minute portion, but preceding or after the community event announcements, we can have the three-minute oral communications.
Okay.
Would you like to have that before or after?
We'll do, I have Sharon's card here, so we'll do Sharon Townsend, please, first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, and staff. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Congratulations, Madam Mayor. I'm very proud of you. I'm really proud to be here to announce the new reinvented Taste of Downtown Glendale. It's taking place next Wednesday, May 3, from 5:30 to 8:30. We're very excited this year, because we have partnered with Glendale Arts to bring you a new reinvented, bigger, and more fun, and better event this year. There'll be 35 restaurants. We have 12 new restaurants participating, including the Eden on Brown, Tender Greens, the Tommy's Food Truck will be here this year, Whole Foods. We have three beer and wine locations. Our new Brew Yard Beer Company will be at the Alex Courtyard. We'll have Wine at Massage Envy, and also, I'm really excited that the Museum of Neon Art is participating, so they will be a wine tasting location as well. We have three check-in locations. You can check in at the Alex, at Cushman Wakefield, or the Museum of Neon Art, so there's plenty of spaced-out places that you can park and check in. Our CV Jazz Band is once again going to be at the CPK Plaza, and then we have four additional pop-up bands that have been curated specifically for the events along the way. We have some events specifically for kids this year. We have Kids Art to Go, and then KR LA is also doing some art and some games for them at the Alex. This year, something that's new, we have a sponsored goodie bag with items in it, so you can carry, eat your food and carry pickup items along the way, and there'll be items by our major sponsors, such as Rafi Solanian from John Hart Real Estate, the Glendale Downtown Association, the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, and Dr. Brian Berg. New this year also, we'll have some community organizational tables, such as the Kiwanis and the Rotary, and we're trying to get Seroptimus there, so you can help with that. Tickets are very reasonable. They're $30, $40 if you'd like wine and beer. They can be purchased online. You have a flyer. You can go to our new website, TheTasteOfDowntownGlendale.com, to purchase the tickets, and if you do so by Monday, it's a little bit cheaper. So get your order in, and we hope to see you there. We want to have a great, great event someday. I'd like to close down the streets for this event. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any cards for the three-minute oral communication?
We do. No, the orange cards are not for the three minutes. Yes, we do.
Mike Mohill, followed by Deia Hill.
My name is Mike Mohill. Last time I came before this council, I asked City Manager Ochoa the following questions. City Manager Ochoa, do you live in Glendale seven days a week with your wife and children? Even though you purchased a small home in northwest Glendale, do you reside in your Glendale home seven days a week? Additionally, I ask our city manager, what high-profile individual and former city employee recently filed a big, big claim against our city? What is the claim about, and who is that person? Mayor Devine, I was very disappointed that our city manager, the chief executive of our city, earning over $300,000 a year, was incapable of answering my questions. What was equally disappointing was that neither you nor your other council colleagues did not follow up, asking our city manager, where did he live? After the council meeting was over, our city manager came up to me in anger, and in my face, he tried to show me his bravado by staring me down and saying, "Don't you ever, ever go after my wife and kids." Mr. Ochoa, when you were a child, I was in Vietnam, dealing with bigger people than you. In addition, the other night, Mr. Ochoa was incapable of telling the public how much unrestricted and liquid cash was in our, both our electric and our water funds of GWP in 2000 and 2005. Plus, how much unrestricted and liquid cash do we have today? Mr. Ochoa states, "Assets covered our liabilities," and that was not the answer. Mayor Devine, can you please tell the public tonight how much unrestricted and liquid cash we have in the water and electric funds of GWP? For months now, after I've questioned and wanted accountability and transparency from our city manager, Mr. Ochoa has insulted me with name-calling, snide remarks, innuendos, fabricating statements, and misleading you and the public. Mayor Devine, is this the type of behavior we deserve and expect from the chief executive of our jewel city? Again, Mr. Ochoa, do you live in Glendale and reside in that small house in northwest Glendale with your wife and kids seven days a week? Thank you.
Phil?
Certainly, he knows the answers, or at least he's been told the answers. Whether or not he recalls what those answers are, different story, obviously.
Next speaker?
Let's play the speed round.
You would want to do that, Councilwoman. Okay, Mr. Ochoa, would you like to respond?
It's $100 million in the electric fund. We are almost back to even on the water fund. We, in '05, we had well in excess of, I believe, $150 million in GWP's reserves. The council, at that time, did not increase rates, did not sell bonds, but we did proceed with a very aggressive capital program. That drew down reserves, cash reserves, in those accounts. We have been very clear repeatedly with Mr. Mohill that the cash assets that the city has for pension, for many of our other obligations, are indeed cash liquid assets. He believes that we are referring to the assets, the fixed assets buildings, rolling stock of the organization. It's not the case. We've never said that's the case, but he chooses not to recognize that with the aforementioned innuendo and other comments. For the record, I do live in that, we prefer to call it cozy, little house in northwest Glendale, where we happily live, just the four of us and our dogs, with a kennel license, and we have since July of 2012. So, seven days a week.
We're not going to ask you to give out the address.
Not that it's any of his business, yes, so...
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes. Mr. Garpetyan?
From the city attorney. Does the city manager have to reside, does he have to reside in Glendale?
I believe the implication is there's a charter provision, an outdated charter provision, which requires the city manager to reside in the city. That charter provision is unconstitutional, per a California constitutional provision that preamps the city from requiring that. So that's, so no, he's not required to live in the city.
I just wanted to, no, I don't, I didn't know that the city manager has to live in the city.
So to repeat that, you do not have to live here?
I do not, but it's kind of hard to sell Pepsi when you're drinking Coke, and so we moved into town forthwith, and we have been proud members of this community, all four of us.
Well, I actually think that this is your home, City Hall, because this is the only place I ever see you, almost every single day, all day, every day. Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. And Deia? I hope I pronounced that correctly. It's beautiful. Ms. Hill?
Hi.
Bye.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Congratulations. I'm here to talk about the California Accountable Communities for Health Initiative. I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Healthier Community Coalition. It is well-recognized that it takes a broad range of partnerships across the healthcare system, as well as sectors, to make significant improvements in personal and population health in order to achieve greater health equity. California Accountable Communities for the Health Initiative is looking for six accountable communities for health to support. This proposal involves the cooperation of the city, of Parks and Recreation, the school district, the YMCA, the YWCA, Glendale Healthy Kids, and an array of health providers, including all three of Glendale's hospitals, all working together as members of the Glendale Healthier Community Coalition. Under the proposed project, GHCC members will seek to bring together key sectors and partners in order to collectively advance the common health goal of reducing diabetes and diabeticy here in the community. The Kachi Project builds upon our community's foundation of collaboration and implementation experience. We're really excited, because this is an opportunity that Glendale is well-prepared for. We have over 25 years of collaborative experience, and therefore, it's a natural next step for our community to participate in this initiative and become an ACH, or an Accountable Community for Health. The healthcare landscape is changing, and this is the direction that it is moving. The California Accountable Communities for Health Initiative, it is a mouthful, try and say that six times, is a really good match. We have the Glendale Healthier Community Coalition, the Chamber of Commerce, Glendale's Three Hospitals, the Glendale Unified School District, the LA County Department of Public Health, all working together as closely as we have ever been. This initiative will fund $250,000 for the first year, where our initial step will focus on designing our cooperative program, and then developing collaborative agreements from there. There's potential for additional funding for each year, for up to two years, at $300,000 per year. This allows us to develop and focus the program that we design. Our program will address health risk, specifically risk associated with chronic disease, in particular diabetes. That means that fitness and nutrition are going to be important issues for this community. Glendale as a community is in a great position. We are farther along, due to the Glendale Healthier Community Coalition, than many of the communities that will be applying for this grant, and our Collective Impact Initiative, We Own the Health of Our Community. Through ACH, we will integrate our community engagement and collaboration with clinical practice. We're excited to pursue this funding opportunity that matches our own state of readiness, and so we just wanted to inform you of that. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for your letter of support.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
As a conclusion for the three-minute oral communication cards.
We have no other cards.
Next item on the agenda at 7 is Adoption of Ordinances. 7A is amending the zoning map to reflect a new zoning designation related to the Niedera Drive historic district overlay zone. Drive historic district overlay zone, introduced on April 12th, 2016 by Councilmember Friedman.
Move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian. Mayor Devine.
Yes. Thank you, very good. Very nice. Next item.
Action items. At 8:00 is city manager regarding request from the Glendale City Council to adopt a resolution to establish a Glendale sister-city relationship with the city of Santiago de los Caballeros Dominican Republic. A1 is a resolution establishing a Glendale sister-city program with Santiago de los Caballeros Dominican Republic.
Okay, and I understand Dan Bell is going to present this item.
Yes, I am. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Devine and councilmembers. The report and resolution before you tonight would establish a sister-city relationship between our city and the city of Santiago de los Caballeros in the Dominican Republic. There are a few reasons in your report why we are considering this tonight. The first being, a few years, last year, I should say, the Dominican Republic Consul General's office, which is here and is also represented by Madam Consul General here tonight, Ms. Celeste Peña, had requested a closer relationship between Glendale and the Dominican Republic. Four years ago, the Consul General's office moved from San Francisco, relocated here to Glendale on Brand Boulevard, and we're happy to have them here in Glendale. Last year also, in the summer, in July, as you know very well, Glendale served as a host city for the World Games, for the Special Olympics, a great honor for us and a wonderful experience. During that time, we actually host, along with Bonner and Armenian teams, the Dominican Republic team. So we had a chance to get to know the Consul General's office a little bit better, as well as the Special Olympics organization, and specifically, the Dominican team who we hosted for three wonderful days of games in Los Angeles. And that was all came to a head shortly there, a few months ago. Councilmember Garpetian had asked staff to bring back a report and met with Consul General's office to bring back a report to establish a sister-city relationship with Santiago and the Dominican Republic. That is a brief overview of my report. There are three alternatives in your report tonight, and as I said, the Consul General is here in person if you had any questions of her.
Any questions?
If I make a brief comment.
Sure.
First, I'd like to welcome Consul General Celeste Peña. And invite her to come to the podium, please. Mr. Ron Lizardo is here as well. A few months ago, I had a very good meeting with the Consul General, Mr. Lizardo. We talked about issues in Dominican Republic as well as in our country, and decided, we were talking about which city would suit best to be in this sister-city program, and that's when Santiago de las Caballeros came, you know, to the table because of the cultural, political, industrial, and financial centers that they have. And it's very close to us. I want to congratulate you and thank you for your involvement in our community. As Dan Bell indicated, your role in Special Olympics last year was tremendous, and it was very, very encouraging to me. So after meeting, I asked for staff to bring the sister-city program back, the agreement back, so hopefully it would pass tonight and we establish our sister-city program. I'm looking forward to working with Dominican Republic and, I want to work on my Spanish a little bit, Santiago de las Caballeras.
De los Caballeros.
Santiago de las Caballeros. I got a little bit overexcited.
De los treinta caballeros.
Thirty gentlemen. Thirty, yeah. So, the floor is yours, and welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Buenas tardes a todos, honorable miembros del Consejo Municipal de Glendale. En nombre de nuestro honorable alcalde de Santiago de los Caballeros, el doctor Gilberto Cerulli, quien con su gentil disposición lo invita a nosotros para representarlo aquí ante ustedes.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and distinguished members of the council members. And on behalf of the mayor of Santiago de los Caballeros, Dr. Gilberto Cerulli, who has appointed us to represent him here in this, as she believes, historical act between the two cities.
Es importante resaltar que el honorable canciller de la República Dominicana, quien recientemente acaba de inaugurar la oficina de diplomacia urbana, está al tanto de este acuerdo, así como también el honorable nuestro embajador en Washington DC. Y es muy probable que en el mes de agosto ellos estén viajando aquí a inaugurar nuestro monumento.
It's important to also highlight that the Ministry of Foreign Relations as well, as the ambassador of the Dominican Republic and the United States are both aware of this agreement, and they're both very pleased, especially since recently, the ministry opened a ministry, a department for urban diplomacy, which this falls directly into. And they're probably both will be here in August, when we are working on doing a monument in Central Park.
Es decir, que con Glendale y Santiago estamos inaugurando la diplomacia urbana en la República Dominicana.
It's, in other words, with Glendale and Santiago de los Caballeros, we're actually beginning this urban diplomacy program that the ministry has launched.
Hoy queremos agradecer profundamente a la ciudad de Glendale, especialmente a ustedes que han hecho posible esta hermandad.
We want to thank the city of Glendale, especially each and every one of you, for making this sisterhood possible.
Nosotros desde que estamos aquí hace cinco años hemos visto la bullosidad y el trabajo y el tesón con que trabajan los ciudadanos y ciudadanas de Glendale, y para nosotros es un orgullo y un ejemplo.
From the five years that we've been here, we've been witnesses of the hard work of the citizens of Glendale, and we've admired how that's been reflected in their prosperity and well-being of the city. And for us, it has been a great example that fills us with pride to be part of this community.
Pero quiero agregar que Glendale ha sembrado en buena tierra. La ciudad de Santiago de los Caballeros es conocida en todo el mundo como una de las tierras más fértil, le llamo la tierra fértil del Cibao, y es donde se cosechan el tabaco, el merengue, y la mujer y el hombre se levantan de solazo a trabajar sin descanso cada mañana.
It's a lesson in Spanish for all of you, obviously. She just wants to highlight that the city of Santiago, it's been, you know, it's been a good choice because it's a very fertile land, it's the land where tobacco is grown, the capital of tobacco is known around the world for that. And it's also a city where also people, you know, bathe their faces with the dawn, and they, and they, and they work hard until sundown. So it's also a city of hard-working, loyal people.
Santiago de los Caballeros se conoce como la ciudad corazón porque eso somos y eso damos, corazón, solidaridad, amor, y sobre todo mucha dignidad.
Yes, the city of Santiago is known as the heart city, and their people are known for their loyalty, their love, and their dignity and solidarity.
Nos toca a nosotros trillar esta hermandad porque es el legado que estamos dejando, y qué bonito que las generaciones futuras puedan exhibir con orgullo nuestra hermandad. Muchas gracias.
Let us together, she believes, try to move forward with this idea and work on this legacy that we would leave behind. There is no hesitation in our dream of making a world where peace, love, and solidarity abounds, and in so, our future generation will bear with pride this sisterhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
We would also like to use the opportunity to invite you all to our annual event this Sunday, where each and every one of you will have a special place, and where we will be having a ceremony to commemorate the sisterhood and move forward with both cities. There'll be lots of food, music, and lots of Dominicans there, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
I just want to say, I thank you for bringing this forward. It's been a real honor to have the consulate here in Glendale. I was there for your opening, which was wonderful. And I'm so glad to see this relationship grow, and I'm looking forward to taking my first trip to visit Santiago, too. I don't have one planned, but I'm planning on planning one at some point. Because I'm sure, you know, we should continue this and get to know the people there, the government, the businesses, and it's going to enrich both of our cities, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Any, Mr. Najarian, anything?
It's wonderful to expand our family, and I think we're becoming very international as a city of Glendale with family all over. This is our first sister city in the Caribbean, and I look forward to visiting. Thank you.
And I'd just like to say that I'm very pleased with this decision and having you as our sister city. It was a pleasure to meet your government officials, and I remember, I think, meeting you last year and having a very nice conversation when we just found out that you were here, and it was just absolutely great. So I'm very pleased that we're moving ahead with this and welcome you. And of course, we're going to be like pulling straws on who will be the first to visit Nicaragua. Thank you, muchas gracias.
Already purchased my ticket.
You did, I wouldn't have. Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes, I move 8A, alternative 1.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
C.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian. Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item, please.
Madam Mayor, next item at 8B is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding supplement report regarding fiscal and service impacts associated with potential repeal of utility tax, community services, and parks. B1 is a motion to note and file this report.
Ochoa?
Yes, ma'am. So we are going to move through a very brief report that is detailed in your packet that really is the second in a series of several reports. Last month, the council, in anticipation of ballot measure N, and in looking to determine what the potential impacts could be, asked for a report as it might impact public safety services. Now, we'll be talking tonight about community services and parks, and then two weeks from tonight, be talking about impacts on libraries, all with the idea of being able to help you gauge what those potential impacts might be and how you might respond to them. Because truly, if measure N passes on the June 7th ballot, then 45 days later approximately, or as soon as the results are certified, it becomes effective. And what we have heard in our outreach from members of the public is, well, the city has to have a plan. And you recall at the beginning of this discussion about measure N and the utility user tax, or that portion of the utility user tax that's being challenged, there really is a spectrum of options, and I think ultimately, we're going to land somewhere in the middle, if in fact, it is approved by the voters. You recall that we had talked about the idea of eliminating two whole departments. This department that we're talking about tonight, as well as the library department, which combined make up about $18.5 million, which would absorb the loss of the $17.5 million to the general fund. But of course, that probably was very impractical. Our residents do depend on their quality of life services. We've seen it throughout the Great Recession. Significant cuts or changes to quality of life services were resisted emphatically by the members of the community. On the flip side, it had been suggested to the council repeatedly that if only you would contract out police and fire, which in an independent city like ours, a full-service city, take up about 2/3 of that general fund budget, if only we would contract that out, that that would make up the $17.5 million. Well, that was studied by our internal audit unit and determined that on the fire side, we're actually less expensive than our partners in the county. And on the police side, the efficiencies that you get by centralization come at the expense, perhaps, of the service level outcomes by way of crime rates and response times, and even at the field services level, we there, too, are less expensive. The efficiencies gained through the back-office operations, the loss of the DNA lab, for example, or centralization of jails come with some significant changes in service levels that perhaps Glendale wasn't ready for. Thus, that leads us back to this middle ground. And in doing so, as you prepare for your budget study sessions, the idea that you would cut dramatically, perhaps, in areas where you could, knowing that the first priority of municipal government from through the eyes of its residents oftentimes is public safety, that the brunt of the cut would come from the soft services, and still not spare internal service departments or public safety departments, they, too, would fill that cut. We're trying to help you understand what the orders of magnitude are so that in the instance that the measure N was indeed passed, you would be prepared, however difficult the decisions may be, you would be prepared to make those decisions. So with that as a preamble, we will walk you through this presentation on community services and parks impacts, and certainly, Director Jess Duran and his leadership team are here to answer any questions that you might have. We'll start off with a look at the department budget overall, and I think this is emblematic of some of the problems, some of the confusion that really was surrounding the whole issue of measure N at the beginning. The discussion initially was that the loss of this portion of the utility user tax was only 2% of the city's budget, when in fact, it was 10% of the general fund budget. I think CSP actually demonstrates this dynamic perhaps better than any of our other departments. What you see on the top there in yellow is the general fund portion of community services and parks. And like many other departments and funds within the city apparatus, that department is made up of many different funding sources, but the funding source that would be directly impacted by measure N is there on top, general fund, about $10.5 million. The rest of those funding sources are all restricted. You could not use nutritional meals grant funds for general operations of the department. You could not use emergency solutions grant funds for the other portions of the department. And so, this idea that you look at the entire $800 million city budget and say, "Well, the utility user tax is only 2%," that's where the city recognized that that truly was misleading to the public, was able to achieve relief from the courts, and the argument in favor had to be adjusted to reflect the fact that it was 10% of the city's general fund budget. So you see here the 10.5, and you understand that's 10.5 out of a $32 million budget. What is that 10.5, what is it comprised of? Park maintenance at $6.7 million, recreation facilities and programs get you closer to $2.5 million there. The administration of the department in all its ways shapes and forms over all of those different funds, as well as the general fund operations, about almost $900,000. And then the youth alliance, Glendale Youth Alliance, somewhat of a quasi-independent body, they are attached to the department, although they have many independent functions. So all told, again, that general fund portion is about 10.5. That represents $10.5 million. That represents 61 full-time employees, a little more than 34 hourly and seasonal employees, our rec leaders in the summer, some of the groundskeepers that come and go, lifeguards, things like that. That encompasses 286 acres of parkland that's maintained, well over 125,000 square feet of facilities that are programmed and operated and maintained, and we are serving 230,000 residents. That's youth, that's seniors, that's duplicated and unduplicated folks, so people that are part of our program, that may be part of a winter program, may also be part of a summer program, but the point being that absent the offerings of community services and parks, those individuals, be they youngsters or seniors, don't have that degree of service, whatever that might be. This is what we look like by way of park offerings and facilities. We actually have 46 different facilities, and they consist of 36 parks. In those parks are four community centers, in some cases, also historic homes, the Casa Verdugo, Heritage Park, and some of the others, community buildings, civic auditorium, ballfields and soccer fields. And I know this is a small map, those are little numbers that you see around that map. And if you go to our website and go to parks, you'll get a nice big blow-up of this map, and you can see how spread out and diverse our park offerings and recreation offerings truly are. But this is the starting point. What do we do in those parks? The general maintenance, especially for litter and trash, especially following the weekend activities at most all of our parks, you see that there is daily maintenance. You see there on the right-hand side, the current schedule and You see there on the right-hand side, the current schedule and the frequency. Restroom maintenance is also done, daily turf maintenance in all of our parks, the mowing and the edging, it's done weekly, and in some cases, bi-weekly, depending on the type of park that it is, if it's active or passive. All of our ballfield maintenance, the renovations that we see on that three-year cycle to make sure that the youth leagues are playing on suitable fields, and you see that all the way throughout vandalism and graffiti, our standard is to remove it within 24 hours. Folks said, "Well, why don't you contract out more of your park maintenance?" We actually contracted a pretty significant portion of the parks maintenance operation by having a contractor do median work. All the medians that you see in the city are done by our contractor, Parkwood. The idea being that, for the simple blow-and-go, mow-and-go type of work that they do, that's best served by somebody who doesn't necessarily need to have a whole lot of understanding about what happens in that park. And so, the parks are maintained by the crews that we have in-house, the medians are done by the contractor. So, you see the overall regimen that we utilize for our maintenance. When you talk about what happens in those maintained parks, this slide will just give you a smattering, and I won't go through all of it, but you get an idea about what makes up those, some of those 230,000 duplicated and unduplicated interactions that we have with the community. Our youth programming, the aquatics programming is especially popular. You see all of the special events that the department puts on, and, of course, our sports leagues and contract classes. There's a great deal of interaction with our community, and indeed, for many folks in our community, their touchstone to the city of Glendale is, in fact, the programming that Onig Bulenikian and his team do with our seniors, our youngsters, and actually families of all ages and walks of life. But all of this encompasses the offerings of the department, from senior casework and nutritional meals to day camps. Now...
The numbers in parentheses, I'm sorry, are the number of residents served?
The number of duplicated and unduplicated folks that are served, yes.
Thank you.
Now, what we tried to do, because, again, the idea was to have as realistic a basis of examining what potential cuts could look like as possible, again, the idea that you would eliminate, in its entirety, the parks department and/or the library department just really is not realistic. That's on one end of the spectrum. And so, the challenge for the community services and parks staff was to examine, how would you absorb a $4.6 million reduction on that $10.5 million budget? And then, also looking at further down the lines, that scenario, too, 10.5 or $7.5 million reduction, that would leave you with almost a $6 million operating budget and $3 million operating budget, respectively. So, they went through that solemn task to try to understand how best to shave off and lop off really parts of the operation. As we have said previously, the loss of the, this portion of the UUT would force a restructuring of the offerings that are made to the community, and so, we endeavor here to show you what that means. In terms of that loss of 44% of the budget, $4.6 million of the general fund budget, that would necessitate the Maple Park Community Center being closed, Spar Heights Community Center being closed, Skate Park closed, Pacific Pool closed, and, of course, the closure of the Civic Auditorium. On the other side, you see that, at least with the Pacific Park Community Center, while there would be a significant reduction, it still would be operable to the tune of maybe a 37% reduction in hours of operation. The ARC would be closed by nearly a third of the time. And parks with gates, i.e. those parks that could be secured, would be reduced in their hours of operation to the tune of 13%. I showed you previously what the current, and you see it there in the middle column, what the current regimen is for park maintenance. So, you see across the top, general park maintenance is, litter and trash is done daily today. Under Scenario 1, that 44% reduction, it would be three times a week. And when you look at, look down the line, restroom maintenance, turf maintenance, and so on and so forth, you get the idea that we're still doing many of the same things that we've been doing, it's just being done at much less frequency. And so, you see kind of what the impacts would be, and the idea that we would be sharing resources for the entire city versus, right now, we're able to divvy the city up in the most efficient means possible. But, at the end of the day, it means less maintenance in that operation. In terms of the sports facilities and youth facilities and youth programming, I think it's probably easier to see just those that would be remaining as opposed to those that would be closed, but it is worth noting that all youth programming that is operated by the city would be ceased. When you look at the drop-in programming at Pacific Community Center and the ARC, that would still be offered, albeit at reduced hours. The day camps that are immensely popular throughout the course of the year, we would be scaling that down to one day camp and try to centralize as much as we can for an economy of scale, all of our offerings that would be remaining at Pacific Community Center. Sports leagues would still be in existence because largely, they are paid for through the fees that the leagues pay, and so, the fee-for-service model would still be able to be upheld, and so, you see the sports complex not being impacted too terribly by this, because most of the folks that are playing, are paying to play there. And again, fee-for-service types of rentals would still be in existence, as would the volunteer program, of course. So, as we had showed you, the facilities map, this is all of our parks and facilities, the 36 public parks, all the way down to the three soccer fields, with a, at a $10.5 million budget. If you were to take that down to a $5.9 million budget, what you see there in the gray are the facilities that would have the reduced hours of operation, and then, the black dots would be the facilities that are just outright closed. So, from that to that. Now, that seems awfully drastic. I understand that, and folks sometimes get upset to say, "Well, why don't you find a way to manage?" The reality of the situation is that there is no magic wand to take less than what you have now and somehow stretch it to more than what is currently being offered, let alone maintain what's currently being offered. And so, what you see is a reflection of the reality that a cut in revenue would equal, in good business terms, a cut in expense. That really is what I would hope that folks would expect from us, to focus on that first city council priority of fiscal responsibility, and I think you see that here. Rather than bore you with all of the somber details of what would happen under Scenario 2, I'll just, because it's more, you know, it's more severe than Scenario 1, I will only say and summarize that we'd be left basically with a $3 million operating budget and closing 26 of the parks and facilities. So, that map that you've seen now looks like that. That leaves us with about the 56 full-time employees, 44, or 56 full-time employees are eliminated, leaving, I believe, five full-time employees, and a large number of, the full-time employees are actually being moved into full-time equivalent, meaning that we'd be going to hourly. So, the idea, again, that you would have a, you would still have a parks department, it still could operate, and you would still have park assets, but we would be matching operations to revenue. Because behind these cuts, there are cuts that we will have to demonstrate for you at the Library Arts and Culture Department, and the remainder would be focused on police and fire, if indeed, the priority is to protect and reserve public safety as much as possible, understanding that public safety would not be completely held harmless, or even nearly held harmless, from those cuts. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions. Jess and Nistya, you're to.
Thank you. I have two speaker cards. Would you like to...
Sure. Ms. Friedman? So, let's cut to the chase, because what I've heard from the proponents of Measure N is that these are scare tactics, because all we need to do is to become a more efficient city by trimming employee salaries and pensions, basically. So, could you speak to that? Maybe talk about what we've done in the past several years, and whether it's possible to do that, and how we would do it, and, you know, kind of, what, you know, if that's a feasible solution?
I would submit to you that it isn't, because of the hard work that's been done to get to this point, the reduction of about 20% of the full-time workforce, the cost-sharing that occurs with all of our employee associations, all of our employees and the cost of their own pension. Measure N, regardless of how you feel about it, I think we all can agree that it's a revenue measure. It's a revenue measure. It is not a pension measure, it is not a compensation measure. And so, it does not undo our contract with PERS, or PERS's contract with the employees, or the employees' contract with the city, or the city employees, bless you, the city employees negotiated agreements with the city. So, the idea that somehow the reduction in revenue would simply force them, materialize some solution, it's a solution that we don't see, and based on all the cuts that we've made to get to this point, it's a series of solutions that we just haven't seen to exist in reality. I just don't know how that is reality at this point.
Okay. I have two cards, so I'll... Mike Mohill, followed by Frank Gallo.
Madam Mayor, how long?
Three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. Mayor Devine, I just have a few questions. What is the amount of money the taxpayers, taxpayers' money so far, has been spent advertising about Measure N? So far, we've seen two flyers, a GWP insert in our bill. Why so much money's being spent? Measure N is about maintaining the outrageous salary and pension raises year after year for our city employees. Mrs. Jasmine Beers, Assistant City Manager, just had a classification change from 8 to 12 and gave her another $48,000 a year pay raise. It's all about the money, and the folks who have to pay the bills will be living on Social Security and a 401K plan. Again, how much money, Mayor Devine, has the city spent of the taxpayers' money for Measure N? Another thing that's troubling me is that we have a city manager here who I contend is violating our charter. The charter states he has to live in Glendale, reside seven days a week, and Mr. Garcia just said the constitution, California state constitution overrides that.
We stick to the...
Yes, but how can he speak when he's against the law? He's trying to tell us what the law is, and Mr. Garcia has never told us what provision of the state constitution allows the city manager to be here. He's violating our law. And Mr. Garcia, I'm disappointed, you are the city attorney, and the state constitution does not override the city charter when it comes to who is our mayor. So, we have a conflict of interest here, Mayor Devine, and we have a problem with this whole setup. Ladies and gentlemen, the viewing audience, Measure N, think about it, the elite establishment, that's the unions, police, fire, general employees, managers, are all against it. So are the special interests of our city. You see their signs in front of different restaurants and different businesses. Those are the folks who have a special interest in the city, and they want the status quo. But that's okay, after all, we're only paying more money in GWP bills to finance these salaries and these pensions. $1.6 billion in bond debt to help fund our wonderful city. It goes on and on, folks. This is our opportunity to say, "No more, no more, let's change the system." If we do not change the system, if we do not vote for Measure N, yes, then folks in the viewing audience expect more raises in your fees and your taxes through GWP. You think the tier is bad?
Thank you, Mr. Mohill.
It'll be worse.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hate to get all excited here, but you know, we have a serious problem in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Gallo.
My name is Frank Gallo. On the previous utility users tax presentation, Mr. Ochoa emphasized a comparison between the cities of Glendale and Santa Monica. Glendale has a population of 198,000 people with a few thousand visitors per year. Santa Monica has a population of 91,000 people with 8 million tourists per year. Nine out of every 10 people walking the streets of Santa Monica are tourists who have no vested interest in the city. And five out of those nine are foreigners who have little knowledge about the law, let alone knowledge about local ordinances. Santa Monica Police serves a flooding population of about several times larger than Glendale, and in most cases, these people have to work, actually, not most cases, they have to work with less police officers than Glendale. They have 27 police officers less than Glendale. And they have to take a much larger number of service calls. The 214 police officers in Santa Monica have a more efficient response when it comes to violence, crimes, clearance. So, where is Glendale more efficient? Managing its general fund? $115 million of Santa Monica's $350 million general fund goes to pay for public safety. Glendale expends $111 million of its $170 million general fund in public safety. About 33%, I have a slide, I don't know if we can get it, about 33% of Santa Monica's general fund goes to public safety. For Glendale, it's 66%. So, let's go to the next one. So, it's a much larger amount of money from the general fund that goes to public safety. As a consequence of the recession, the city may cuss, but you can see that there is plenty of room for more improvement. Efficient management of city resources is what citizens are asking from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa? I thought you said that Santa Monica had a population of 90,000?
I think they're about 100, but 90, 100, sure. I would also submit to the gentleman that, in terms of the size of the community, if he's looking at both police and fire, the fire territory for the city of Glendale is considerably larger than that of Santa Monica. If you look at the outcomes, I think, I don't know that Santa Monica is higher than the city of Glendale, or is better rated than the city of Glendale, either as a Class 1 Fire Department, which speaks to the apparatus training and responsiveness of our fire department, nor is the Santa Monica Police Department rated better than city of Glendale in terms of safety as a community, as you measure Part 1 crimes. So, not quite sure what the intention is, but the idea that if we want to take the nasty plunge with the city of Santa Monica, I think we can do that and show very, very well. If it's a function of cost, I can tell you that Santa Monica, bless them, they seem to pay more than everybody else in the, in the County of Los Angeles. And so, if we're aspiring to a Santa Monica model, I would venture to guess that a lot of the folks that he and Mr. Mohill are railing against would line up to say, "Yes, do unto me as Santa Monica does unto its." So, I don't quite understand what the point was. With respect to the cost to the taxpayer of the election, it's interesting, I think, I think this election, and I will defer to Arti, but I think all in, the election's probably going to cost us well in excess of $350,000 to $400,000 to ask a question that we asked of the community but seven years ago, and heard a resounding 2/3 of our voters said yes. So, but that notwithstanding, to the extent that we do have education flyers, I think that if truly one of the council's priorities is engaged informed citizenry, we put flyers out to let folks know we cannot advocate, we can only educate, and we provide that money, or those flyers, the money for those flyers.
That $350,000, give or take, that you mentioned is the cost for having this ballot measure on the ballot, does that include those flyers you're talking about?
It may. I have to go back and check with Arti, but it, right now, I want to say that we have expended about $50,000 to print out mailers for 200,000... expended about $50,000 to print out mailers for 200,000 residents. And that has gone out. We've made full use of our social media apparatus as well. But I would submit to you that that's a cost that is engendered only because of the Measure N on the June ballot.
But to be clear for people, we're not spending $350,000 on those mailers. I just don't want anybody to misunderstand.
No, you're spending it on the election for the county to come and run the election for you. But it is worth noting that $350,000 to $400,000 is $350,000 to $400,000 that could be spent on something else.
Okay, I have two cards. I'm not going to accept any more cards, so I hope these are the last two. Ina Berger.
Good evening, Mayor Devine and City Council. I've never been here before, so I'm not sure about how to address everybody. My name is Ina Jean Berger, and I've been a resident of Glendale for 46 years, which is most of my life. And I'm here tonight as a member of the Glendale Tax Limitation Committee, the people you don't like, that handful of citizens that the city is remarking that have gotten this measure on the ballot. But let me tell you, it's not just a handful. When I walked my neighborhood door to door, I found that there were a lot of, there was a lot of support for this measure. We got more signatures than required legally to get this on the ballot, so it's, the information that I've received in the mail implies that only a handful of people are behind this. Well, that's not true. And what I found when I was speaking to my neighbors is that the citizens of Glendale are fed up with watching our government grow, grow, and grow, but the population has pretty much been stagnant. It has not been growing in recent years. But our utility bills are growing, the government is growing, and the utility user tax has grown also, not to mention the sewer, the trash. I mean, I look at my bills all the time because I'm on a very fixed income, and it's very, very hard to deal with all this growth. And instead of finding ways to cut expenses, I know you've been doing some cutting, I've heard that, I read all the material that comes to me, I have to cut too. I've had to not use my air conditioner and my heat in order to pay for these high utility bills and the high taxes on top of them. The government seems to be finding more sources of revenue instead of finding more ways to cut. It's been a difficult past eight or nine years with the recession. I know it's affected everybody, but yet, it doesn't seem to affect the city because wages and pensions still get increased. And I think that that's where a lot of the money is going. Here are some of the facts. 536 city employees are making between $100,000 and $200,000 in pay and benefits, 485 between $100,000 and $200,000 in benefits alone, 163 make between $200,000 and $300,000 in pay and benefits, and 28 between $200,000 and $260,000 in benefits alone. Governor Brown only made $212,640 in 2014. Please, city of Glendale, do not insult us, the citizens, by saying that you'll have to cut emergency services like fire and police. I'm tired of hearing that scare tactic. I've been getting things in the mail about that. And speaking of things in the mail, I get things that say, "If you want to find out more about this, please call this number." It's one-sided. If you're going to give, say you're going to give information about a measure, you need to give both sides of the information, both sides of the coin. It's, to me, it's propaganda. That's how I interpret it. And the facts are that there actually have been surpluses, and approximately two times the seven and a half million that would be reduced by eliminating this tax.
Thank you. Your time's up.
I thought I had five minutes.
Unfortunately.
That was three? I need to learn to talk faster because I didn't get to the important part.
Sorry.
Other people have been up here longer, I think.
Bill Tallyferro.
My name's Bill Tallyferro, and I've been here once before, so this is kind of new. Anyway, the, here to speak, a couple of different things. I want to keep it kind of light. I know we've been talking about some heavy numbers here. And by the way, I want to say that I've tried to eat at Porto, I tried to go to Porto's.
Porto's.
I love to eat there, but there's always this huge line, so I loved your comment on that. It's a good place. I wish I could get in. Anyway, okay. I've lived in, up in Glendale, near the Oakmont Country Club. And basically, what I want to talk about tonight, just really briefly, is the median on Bojai Boulevard. And if you're familiar with it, you're going to be speaking on it on the 14th along with Mr. Coco Panassian.
Behind you.
Is that?
He's behind you.
He's right here. Okay, anyway, so it'll be a pleasure to talk to him. Anyway, I received a letter in the mail from my homeowners association, and basically, I just, I want to give a little bit of background on that. My parents, I inherited the house after my mother died, I bought out my sister, and it's one of the most, it's probably the most beautiful street in Glendale. It is a beautiful street if you've driven up there, and a lot of people live up on the hill, and it's a very delightful street to go up. And according to what they're talking about is they're going, they're proposing, the city is proposing to spend a lot of money to rip up the entire center divider and get rid of all the sod and make it look as ugly as Verdugo Road going into Montrose. Right now, I drove up tonight, there's weeds, there is a bunch of trash, it's not very pretty. Anyway, in 1969, when my mother was there, just after my father died, they ripped up the street and put in a big, huge storm drain down the middle of it, and she was involved with landscaping it. So, she was very much involved with design of it, so it's a beautiful...
Evening, Bill. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but are you going to speak on the UUT?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yeah, that's part of it.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, what I'm trying to, okay, the point I'm trying to get at is that what we're talking about is kind of the irresponsibility of the city. They're going to spend thousands of dollars ripping up the center divider of this beautiful street because Jerry Brown says we have to do it. And I'm, you know, that's according to this address here. So, I'm trying to figure out, why does the city, and again, it kind of brings the point about irresponsibility. I don't want to, I want to see that, why are we spending all this money to totally rip across the street, to redo the landscaping, when, you know, and we're talking about not having any money? So, that's what I was trying to figure out, is why, you know, how come the city can have all this money to spend on tearing up a beautiful, beautiful environment when they just leave it alone? And I know the talk they're going to be talking about is the, is that you can't irrigate it. Well, there's water down at the Oakmont Country Club, and you can spend a few dollars to save a very beautiful access to the city of Glendale. So, I could go on and get a whole history of it, but it's, it is part of the whole, the whole thing about the irresponsibility of the city, not spending money, and also spending too much money on other things that I consider not important. So, thank you.
Okay, those are, concludes the cards. Open to discussion, if any. Otherwise, we will just note and file.
It's just report for note and file, yes, sir. I will submit to you, though, that we haven't had, I believe, a sewer rate increase since 1998, a trash increase since, how long, Rubik? The water rates, I do empathize with folks, the water rates and electric rates that went up, and they did go up in a relatively short amount of time, but that was because the rates hadn't been increased previously. And so, it's important to be able to take that perspective, to take that look, to the extent that the city, that government is growing. Again, I would submit to you that we have cut 20 percent of the full-time workforce and kept that up. When I got here, it was 1,842 employees on the books. We're down to 1,575, and I don't see us getting to the other side of 1,600. So, I, there are, there are lots of things that get said, but I do think they have to be rooted in reality. And again, I would encourage folks, go to Transparent California, look at the information there, and try to put it in context, because I think it tells a story that Glendale residents and businesses can be terribly, terribly surprised about how well this city council, how well your management team and all of the staff have done to make sure that you're living within your means. So, it's a little bit of a surprise, I think, for folks to hear of a government that's doing the right thing. As Mr. Tallyferro points out, sometimes we disagree with what happens in Washington or in Sacramento, but this is Glendale.
Thank you. Councilmember Friedman?
Well, I was just going to say that the gentleman who just spoke, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Oh, fair.
Bill, okay. Talking about programs that you think are a waste of money, there are programs that we do that sometimes I think are a waste of money, or they wouldn't be my first priority. But every year, we go through the budget, and we'll be doing it again in a couple of weeks. And we go through every department and talk about a lot of these programs, sort of in the broader sense, and then every single week, we approve or don't approve a lot of these programs. And we sometimes have people come, and sometimes we go through the budget and nobody comes. But it's online, it's on television, and I would just recommend that people who feel that large sums of money are being spent in the wrong way, that you weigh in with us and come and speak and make it into that kind of a dialogue. Because it's very hard to budget without having public input. You know, I've talked about having more participatory budgeting with the community, and I hope it's something that we move into for that reason. But we do invite the public, we do have public hearings, we get emails, and, but to say that because you don't like a median, or because you don't like the way certain things are spent, that, no, that the money should be withheld from the city, I don't think is a healthy way to approach budgeting. I think it's much better for us to look at the money that we have and, as a community, figure out how to allocate it, because I think that we deliver very good services with public safety with libraries in a lot of areas, and I'm very nervous about having reductions in those departments and what it would do. Even when we look at employee salaries and pensions, even that is something that's discussed at this council and voted on, and where the public has a chance to come and give input. It's not done in a vacuum, and it's not done... So, I would recommend that the same enthusiasm for this ballot measure continues to coming and being a part of those budgetary decisions and being a part of those appropriations and those votes, you know, ongoing. And I think that's a healthier way to impact the city's budget, rather than saying that if you don't like the way things are being spent, you'll just take the money away completely, because that may not just cut the areas you want and leave the things that you like intact. That's probably not what's going to end up happening. Thanks.
You're welcome. I suggested, Coco, maybe you can have a conversation with Bill at some point and explain to him why his median on Bodri is being torn up. Do I have a motion to file note and file?
So moved.
Second. And we'll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian. Mayor Devine?
Yes. I should explain, in case people are wondering, Mr. Sananian, Councilmember Sananian is in Washington, DC for the Airport Commission. That's why he hasn't, isn't here this evening. Next item, please.
It sees director of Public Works and Community Services and Parks regarding Civic Auditorium exterior improvements projects. C1 is resolution rejecting all the bids, dispensing with competitive bidding, and authorizing Director of Public Works to negotiate directly with one or more of the bidders and the city manager to execute a construction contract in an amount not to exceed $230,000, plus a 15 percent contingency of $34,500 for the Civic Auditorium exterior improvements project specification number 3579. Two is resolution appropriating, resolution of appropriation to appropriate $119,500 from special revenue fund balance to the Civic Auditorium exterior improvements project.
Okay, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, ma'am. So long as we have the Civic Auditorium operation, it's an asset that needs to be maintained. It's kind of like Jiffy Lube, pay me now or pay me a lot more later. So, we have before you a maintenance project at the Civic. So, with that, Jess Duran will, oh, I'm sorry, give us the Jess, would you? Jess will give you the presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa, Mayor Devine, members of the City Council. This will actually be a joint presentation between Community Services and Parks and Public Works as we are partners in implementing our capital improvement projects. But this, of course, relates to the iconic Civic Auditorium and its need for an exterior facelift. If you recall, we were here last October and reviewed the proposed plans, improvement plans with the City Council, and requested authorization to let the project out to bid, which we received back in October, and that was subsequent to making a presentation and receiving a recommendation of approval from the Parks Commission. The Civic Auditorium, just in terms of some background, was opened in 1938. It consists of 25,000 square feet between the first level and the lower level. It is of a Spanish Mediterranean slash colonial architecture with the pronounced arches and columns. As you know, it hosts, it specializes in hosting special events and rentals, including wedding receptions, sporting events, trade shows, and is a community asset to a lot of our nonprofit organizations who use and rent the Civic Auditorium as a more affordable, yet quality venue for some of their fundraising events, major events. In terms of the scope of the work that we are talking about, it includes the demolition of the north entrance canopy, which in many respects is preventing the design features at that entrance from becoming more prominent because it hides those features. The work includes installation of new south entrance awnings, complete preparation and painting of the entire exterior of the auditorium building in three color tones, upgrading the 26 existing exterior light features, which are currently in disrepair. And then, we are going to cap it off with re-landscaping the south entrance area, the embankment between the entrance and the parking, the parking lot. The new colors were inspired by the building architecture, another city buildings and historical examples. And then, these are some graphics showing the existing condition versus what is proposed.
Can you go back again?
Sure.
Back and forward?
That's, that's existing.
This is what you're removing, this, the side?
Yes.
Which is actually a craftsman style, so it's somewhat inconsistent with architectural
design.
Sorry, when was that added?
I'm not sure when that canopy was added.
Then, do you have, you have, I'm assuming, original photos of the building, and that's what you're restoring it back to?
Yes, we utilized a design consultant, a Goss architects, and so, they researched it and determined that that was added, I'm sorry, I don't have those details, but that was added at a later time after the auditorium building was built.
Go forward again, back to what you're proposing.
Is that the color red?
It's, it's more of a tile color, but it's in that hue. And so, this is the north entrance.
Jay, you approve of this?
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
The color choices, but...
But this have to go, does it go in front of HPC?
It doesn't have to go through HPC, and I don't think it's going to be as vibrant as that. When we, when we met on the site, we were talking about colors, and it was, for me, it was better just because we're restoring it back to much closer to its original appearance than it's been for decades. That entrance, I'm not sure what the year is, I think it's from the 70s, that's being demolished.
And are those the light fixtures on the top, that, on the, each one of the?
Yes, those will, those will be added.
Great. Are the light fixtures, they look like craftsman light fixtures. What are they? We have some kind of a close-up of them somewhere, or can we get them?
I, I don't have a close-up.
I think those might be original.
Are they? Okay. I can't see from, from here, really. I just want to, go back again to the previous one, maybe you can see them in there. They're original, they look like they were.
There's some on the east facade.
The hanging light is gone too. Is that a hanging light?
That's correct.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, I think there are hanging lamps, aren't there?
That's going to be removed also. There's hanging lamps there. Wait, go, so it looks like you're removing one of those hanging lamps then from the entrance? Or is it still there?
Well, the one here was under that, that entry canopy.
But is it still there, or is it being removed?
It will be removed because it's hanging from the canopy, so, and it's not original.
Okay. Okay, Jay, at some point, though, can you look at those details, like the lights, and be sure that they're, you think they're appropriate?
Sure.
This is the north entrance?
That's the north entrance off of the park construction.
Go to the east entrance?
Of course. This is the east entrance, the main entrance, or off of Verdugo... This is the east entrance, the main entrance, or off of Verdugo. It's the existing condition. This is what's proposed.
Honestly, I don't know about this color palette, man, it's just, choices are not that attractive.
And then this is existing entry, posed.
So blue and red.
I don't know about this, I think.
And then this is the existing condition of the south entrance, absent the awnings, and we're proposing to add awnings and this color scheme.
Is that gray? Is that gray?
It's grayish, yeah.
Well, I will say, it is hard to see colors in these, you know, these, that's why designer review, they always have to bring in color, materials board, but, that's okay. Trust you guys.
So at this point, I will hand it off to Mr. Gulanyan.
Colonial palette. Do you say this was Spanish colonial, is that what the architectural?
Yes, yes. Spanish Mediterranean slash colonial.
Yeah, I don't associate gray with either one of those, but I like, the colors are okay. Go ahead.
When the architects made their presentation to the Parks Commission, they showed, in retrospect, maybe I should have included some of those photos, of examples throughout the area, including LA City and surrounding communities, that had similar architecture and aged buildings that were in two and three tones.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, I'll just talk briefly about the bidding process that we went through for this contract. As noted, back in July of 2015, the Parks Commission reviewed and approved the recommended plans for the Civic Auditorium Exterior Improvements. Consequently, in October of 2015, the City Council adopted the plans and specifications for the project, and later on, we advertised for bids. In January of this year, we received three bids. However, all of these bids were missing one or more required information and documentation as part of the bid package, and hence were deemed unresponsive. Now, this provides an opportunity for us to negotiate a contract with one or all three of these contractors or bidders. In our experience, a negotiated contract provides an earlier construction start date, as well as costs that are in line or below the engineer's estimate. In this particular case, the lowest bid was $326,000, whereas the engineer's estimate was $250,000. It is our expectation to be able to negotiate with a base contract amount of $230,000, a reserve and contingency of 15%, and project management cost in the amount of $15,000, or a total of $279,500. Funding is available in the amount of $160,000 that's already been allocated in the Recreation Fund, and as part of this report, we're requesting appropriation of about $119,500 in additional funding from the Recreation Fund. As for the schedule, we anticipate to start construction sometime in July of this year and be completed by November of 2016.
So again, it's worth noting, these are not coming, the funds will not come from the general fund or general fund operations, these are from rec fund, enterprise funds, some of which are actually generated by the Civic itself in terms of funding for use.
Okay. I have two cards, so I'll take those. Mike Mohill. And Catherine Yurka.
Evening, Mayor Devine and Councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. I'm glad someone here finally acknowledged the fact that the Civic Auditorium is historic. And since it is historic, I'm happy we're going to maintain it. My question is, why is the city wasting taxpayers' money again, since the city wants to sell the Civic Auditorium and parking lot 30, 31, 32? If we're going to sell it? I hope we're not. If the city keeps the Civic Auditorium for the residents of Glendale and not sell it, then it is not a waste of taxpayers' money. Let's keep this historic asset. You already decided to throw away Rockhaven. Now it's the Civic Auditorium. What's next? GWP? City Hall? A parking structure? Another library? We don't have any money. You know that as well as I do. But the Civic Auditorium needs to be maintained. It is our historic asset. It'll be here long after you and I are gone, Mayor Devine. I know you don't, I don't believe you have any children, but I know you like to be an ant, a few kids probably. Wouldn't it be nice for them to say, "Ah, that's the Glendale Civic Auditorium that the City Council at one time wanted to sell to Glendale College?" Because they needed the money to pay for the pensions. Let's be different. If we're going to maintain this Civic Auditorium and spend $200,000 plus to maintain it, I'm all for it, for the residents of Glendale. But not to fix it up and then give it to Glendale College. Those are different taxpayers' money. Money that the city does not have. I think the state of California probably has more money than the city of Glendale, don't they? So ma'am, let's make sure we keep the Civic Auditorium in Glendale and not give it away. And I hope you spend money, more money, to maintain that Civic Auditorium. It is a jewel in the city. Thank you.
I guarantee it's going to stay in the city of Glendale.
But not torn down with those parking structures.
Catherine?
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I was not planning to speak tonight. I'm really surprised to hear that this proposed work would not go before the Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Mohill just said he was glad to hear this building was historic. I actually heard something a little different, which is that it's not considered significant enough to go through what I would think of as the normal channels for a historic resource within Glendale. To my knowledge, no historic resources assessment has been done in this property. I didn't hear anything regarding a SEQA analysis. I would be, I would not like to see this work done without some kind of evaluation of the eligibility of this building for the Glendale Register and the California Register, if not the National Register. It's a significant building within Glendale, and it seems to me that it's time for that kind of work to be done, especially before embarking on an improvement to the exterior. Thanks for your time.
Ms. Mayor? If I could ask maybe Jay to comment, because if you're restoring the building back to the original, I don't think you'd need to do a SEQA analysis to remove a 70s portion from an 80s building.
That's exactly correct. There's a categorical exemption in SEQA for work that meets the secretary's standards. All of this work was restorative, and there's no SEQA issue at all. The city recognizes that this is a historic building, and we treat it that way, and I was part of this review, and most work in the city is done at staff level. We don't bring everything to our boards and commissions because we couldn't, and this is an example of staff reviewing something, making judgments, and I think it's going to be a good project.
So, quick question. Besides removing the canopy and painting, what else are we doing to the building?
Excuse me?
Besides removing the canopy, the entrance, and painting the exterior, what else are we doing?
They're restoring light fixtures.
The awnings?
There's some awnings put on the south facade.
So you're not removing any of the architectural elements of the property? You're not touching the exterior, you're not sandblasting, you're not doing any of that?
Being brought closer.
You're just repainting it and adding fixtures, light fixtures and canopies to it?
Yes.
Okay. And the painting can be repainted because the color that we see here today is not, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I have.
Oh, okay, Mr. Garpetian?
Couple of comments. I'm glad this work is being done. And we're not selling the Civic, let me put it that way, not this council member. I think we need to have a master plan for the Civic Auditorium, not just exterior painting or exterior renovation. I think we need to have a master plan for the interior as well. We need Wi-Fi in there, we need new computer system in there, we need to bring it up to date, so we can have better venues, we can have better events, and it will be self-sufficient and more, I promise you that. I like the word that Mr. Duran used, iconic. It's an iconic building. I don't know about this colors, the color palette, I personally, I don't know if we can take a look at a few different options, because this work is going to start in July or what have you, if I'm not mistaken, yes. I personally don't like these colors. I don't think it belongs to the Civic Auditorium, the red and the depressing gray and the light blue, it's not, it just doesn't go together. The colors that it's on, we have on right now, they're, it's not bad at all. Maybe we can stay close to what we have, if it goes with the historic character of the property, but I'd like to see a couple of other versions of the different color palettes before we approve, maybe we approve the project with the colors, I don't think it's just.
And I'd like to ask a question. I thought that I had seen an earlier rendering, and the color was not gray, it was like a beige color, a dark, not tan, but in that kind of color palette. I don't remember seeing gray. I guess I'm just not a gray lover, and I just, when I see gray.
It may have been more of a taupe.
Yes.
What we can do is, is we can, like some homeowners do, they test the colors before they decide exactly which tone or hue to use, and we can do that. We can paint some squares on the, using different shades of the same colors and test it out, and then have a further review in the field and make final decisions on the colors.
Before doing that, who did this work? Color?
We.
Menrins, who?
We have a design consultant called Goss Architects.
Adrian Goss.
Adrian Goss, excuse me, you're absolutely right. And they did their own research and analysis and compared different color schemes with other buildings that were similar in size and architecture and public use as Civic Auditorium, and this was the recommendations. I do believe the actual colors are more toned down than what's on these graphics, but again, we could, we can paint some swaths and test it and compare it with different shades and before we make a final decision.
No, I understand, those are very, those can be a little bit, not deceiving, but it's not easy to make a decision on a, a little bit of a two-by-two or four-by-four spot, but if they can give us a few, two or three different options, but they do it with a computer, they can change the colors easy on renderings, and show us, we can physically see how would it look like in different colors, I think that's.
Thank goodness for that, because I thought Jess and I were going to have to be out there in our white paintings office.
I'll bring my roller too.
We will bring that.
Maybe we could see that comparison that they showed to the Parks Committee, where they were showing the other buildings and showing where they got the inspiration from?
The color palette's the easy part, so if we move forward tonight, we can show you differently.
I personally, I mean, I like color, so I trust the architects with this. Maybe it would make the field.
We can ask them to come over and make a presentation.
Yeah, we can handle that.
Okay. Do I have a motion for this resolution, this item?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Mayor Devine?
There were two parts to this resolution, so we did, that was the first part?
The item.
Pardon, the item?
If you move the item, then move both items.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Next item?
Next item under hearings, 9A is Director of Community Development Regarding Appeal of Design Review Board Case Number PDR 1516692-R located at 3540 Buena Vista Avenue. 9A1 is motion to sustain Design Review Board's decision to approve the Design Review Board's application with conditions. 9A2 is a motion to continue on May 3, directing City Attorney to draft findings, supporting denial of the Design Review Board application.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
Yes, I'm going to be recusing myself on this item because it's come to my attention that my husband was the landscape designer, I believe, on this? Okay, so I'll be, I didn't even know that until you told me, so I'll be recusing myself. Thank you.
And so, Mr. Garcia?
Sure.
Can you explain the options that we have?
Okay. Madam Mayor, members of council, just some procedural items before council makes a decision whether or not to move forward with the hearing. So the hearing is an appeal of a design review case, a case approved by the Design Review Board to demolish the single-family house and replace it with a new single-family house. And the appellant, after the noticing of this hearing and after the matter was placed on the agenda, the party that appealed the decision submitted a withdrawal letter to the Planning Department stating in essence that with some additional changes, they were withdrawing their appeal. Those additional changes were not part of the DRB's approval, but my understanding is there's a subsequent plan that you will be presented with if you move forward. Our code doesn't necessarily address withdrawals of appeals. The closest, the most analogous situation we have is where the appellant does not attend the hearing or present evidence, it's analogous. So if that, in that case, if the appellant, and I believe the appellant's here, but I'm not sure if they want to make an appearance, but if the appellant's choosing not to participate and wants the withdrawal to continue, at that point, the council has a choice of either approving the DRB's decision without a hearing, or if the council wants to hear any additional testimony or wants to revise the project in any way, add any conditions, remove conditions, then the council would need to then go forward, open the hearing, and have the hearing and make modifications. So those are sort of the two options that are available at the outset, whether the council wants to just approve the DRB's decision as is, and the council can do so without a hearing, presuming that the appellant doesn't want to participate in the hearing. And then, and then if the council wants to have the hearing, then the council should open the hearing and have the staff report and the testimony from both the appellant and the applicant.
Okay. Do we know if the, is the appellant here?
My understanding from Plaf is that the appellant's are here.
He wants to hear one to two.
He want, he?
He does want to participate.
Does want to participate?
Would he like to address the council?
They want to address the council.
Okay, then we'll open the public hearing.
Yeah, my suggestion then, if you open the hearing and then hear from staff first.
Exactly. I'm opening the public hearing, and maybe we have a staff report, please.
Should be there. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Milka Toledo. I'm the case planner for the project before you, the appeal at 3540 Buena Vista Avenue. The appellant's Joe and Ms. Lawler, and they're the neighbors to the east, and the owners, Thomas and Ronald Heinz. The hearing again is an appeal of the decision made by the Design Review Board on January 14th of 2016. At that time, the board did approve the project with conditions. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing one-story single-family house and the garage and to construct a new two-story, 2,591-square-foot single-family house and a new 460-square-foot detached garage at the rear of the existing 6,500-square-foot lot. The subject site is located on the east side of Buena Vista Avenue, just south of Broadview, as shown on the location map before you. It is an R1 zone, low-density residential zone, floor ratio District 2. The lot size and frontage consist of, again, 6,500-square-foot lot and a 50 linear foot of frontage along Buena Vista Avenue, and that's typical for most of the lots on this block. Existing site characteristics include, again, the existing house, which is a one-story single-family house, it has a detached garage, it was constructed. single-family house, it has a detached garage, it was constructed in 1926, all which will be demolished. The 6,500 square foot lot does have gently sloping terrain at the front of the property, however, the house is situated on a somewhat areas that are relatively flat. The lot does have a rectangular shape with 50, again, foot linear frontage along Buena Vista Avenue. Going back to this previous slide, I highlighted and read the subject property, again, just south of Broadview, and the appellant's property to, directly abutting the property to the rear facing Downing. This project was determined to be environmentally exempt from CEQA. The Historic Preservation Planner has determined that the house is not an outstanding or exemplary example of the craftsman style and does not have any known associations with events or people significant to the city, region, state, or nation, and therefore does not appear eligible for listing on the Glendale, California or National Register of Historic Resources. This slide before you is the proposed site plan that was, again, reviewed by the board, and that's basically my presentation, what the board approved with conditions. So that's here before you this evening in my presentation, although at the end I will highlight some modifications or revisions that have been proposed.
You, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. The site plan could show the 30-foot setback from the front property line along Buena Vista and the neighboring properties to the north and to the south. The house to the north is a two-story, as viewed from the south side of that particular property, although it appears as a one-story from the front, and the property directly to the south is a one-story as well as the property to the east, to the rear, which is the appellant's property. They're one-story homes. These are the floor plans that were reviewed by the board. This is the front facade proposed for the new house, which highlights the dimension, overall height of 24 feet 1 inch from lowest to highest point of the property. This is the south side of the property, looking north, which is, I refer to as the driveway side, and I'll highlight that later as well in the presentation, because that's one of the items that were part of the revisions that will be taking place or proposed. This is the north and west elevations, as viewed from both the appellant's property, facing the appellant's is the bottom slide or the bottom elevation, and then the north side looking south, that would be the north. Now, here we have the garage elevations, which is setback six feet from the rear property line, that would be the common property line dividing both the appellant's and the subject property. Here's the slide showing the story poles, which story poles have been installed on the property from the origin, since the original project, when it was first proposed to the board, and it has been subsequently modified to reflect changes based on what has been presented to the board since this case has been reviewed at least four times by the board. These are the most recent, though, story poles. Another view, oops, and that's the view along the driveway side or the south side of the This basically shows information regarding the survey of properties within 300 feet of the subject property, and it shows how the proposal is compared to the average and range of properties within 300 feet, the lot size, the proposed house size, the floor area, and the number of stories, which are within the range of properties within 300 A little bit of the case history, originally it was submitted, it was a new two-story house presented to the board on June 26th of 2014. The board did make a motion at that time to return for redesign with 16 conditions. The applicant resubmitted, modified the project, it was reviewed by the board on October 9th of 2014, and again, the board made a motion to return for redesign with eight conditions. The revised project, again, was submitted, reviewed by the board on September 10th of 2015, and they voted again to return for redesign with 12 conditions and one consideration. And finally, the current proposal that the board reviewed, and now you're reviewing as well, because that's the appeal, was reviewed by the board earlier this year in January, and it was approved with conditions. At that time, just a brief synopsis of what led to the approval was that the three board members believed that the project could be modified, could be approved based on clear specific conditions to modify the massing in certain areas. One DRB member felt that the project should be returned for redesign to address the mass and size. One DRB member noted that there are already three larger homes in the immediate area that have set a precedent for other homes, and two members concurred that most of the previous conditions from the last DRB meeting held September 10th of 2015 were addressed, and the project ultimately was approved with conditions three to one. And the conditions, as noted in your packet, was to add a third balconet around the southerly corner on the second floor window towards the front to match the balconets at the front of the house, two, to drop the overall house by approximately two feet, as follows, by pushing the house one foot lower into the ground, and to drop the 10-foot ceiling height to nine feet, thereby reducing the apparent height and proportions on the second floor. And third, to push the roof and mast area at the front where the eve wrapped, to get a substantial roofline to enhance articulation and overall proportion. And four, when addressing condition number three, break the bathroom wall into two separate planes to provide relief in this area. Those conditions are reflected, more or less, in your revised plans that you were recently actually submitted to staff a few days ago, I believe it was the 18th, which, again, I'm going to highlight later in my presentation. Hope I'm not going too fast.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Can you go back to the previous slide? So, item three?
Yes.
Not item three, I'm sorry. Bathroom wall.
Okay.
That is on the...
It would be on the south side.
Outside, on the second floor bathroom.
Yes, you can actually see it on the...
Right, I see there's a little...
There's a break, and it may be a little more apparent on the floor plan.
I see, I see. Also, the balconets are the ones on the front, the little...
Correct, but the one they wanted, the balconet railing was for the one window on the south side, the first window, if you notice, it's visible on the south elevation.
Say it before we go there.
And I would refer to Sheet A 2.0 of the revised plans that are dated for 18.
All right, so the railing is where?
The balcony would be that one window closest to the front along the south side on the second floor, closest to Buena Vista.
That is the bathroom.
That was, that was the balcony that they wanted added, and that was the, also the area where they wanted to have the break, which would be condition number four.
That's the bathroom window?
Correct.
They wanted the balcony on the bathroom window?
They wanted a balcony, yes, there to articulate that particular facade.
Maybe you can answer this for number two, drop the overall house, what, let's...
By two feet?
Pushing the house one foot lower into the ground, what does that, how does that impact the mass?
It's basically a way to achieve, and perhaps Jay can piggyback on what I'm going to say, is it's a way to achieve dropping the overall scale, because appearing at 24 feet, there seems to be a lot of mass and volume, but by dropping it, you get to provide some relief of that overall mass.
It's an optical, I don't get it, I don't know how that would...
Jay would like to articulate a little more on that.
Just as an example, in the earlier version, there were, I believe, three steps that took you up to the entry courtyard level, and by pushing it down, there's now one step bringing you up to that level. So you're lowering the height of the house, there's, it's mainly a scale change, but it also diminishes the mass a little bit. It's definitely bringing the house down, lowering a house two feet is a significant change in our world of review.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so now we have the appeal of the DRB approval, which was filed by, again, the adjacent neighbors to the rear, and the reasons they mentioned in their application or appeal application was because one of the board members was absent, the issue of mass and scale was not properly evaluated by the board, again, mass, overall mass and scale was not properly addressed, the project did not adhere to the North Glendale Community Plan, the floor area, the floor area ratio is above the neighborhood average, and there was lack of evidence presented to the board, including photos of the story poles, visiting the site to see the story poles from there, meaning the applicant's perspective, lack of photos from each of the adjacent properties, and a Photoshop rendering, which was misleading relative to the proportions to neighboring properties and to the mass and scale issues. This is a view of the story poles from the appellant's rear yard looking west at the subject
Can you go back to it again?
Sure.
Where is the, where is the property line, is that behind the...
It's behind the gazebo, behind, or in front of it, and then in front of the umbrella. It's kind of hard to pick up on it because there are some, there's some landscaping or trees and foliage.
Milka, is that the garage that you see first?
Yes.
The garage first and...
Correct, and then...
Okay, got it.
Correct, and then the house.
Be that close to the property line, okay. What's the height of the garage?
Currently, your proposal, it's approximately 11 feet, 11 inches, but I'll have to verify just to make sure. In the latest revision, it shows 10 foot six, but I believe in the original, I have to refer to the plan.
The existing garage is in the same place?
It will be more or less in the same, well, it'll be more or less in the same area, but not exactly in the same exact location, because again, they're setting it back six feet from the rear property line as a result of an easement that currently exists.
What's the height of the existing?
I would say with that, I don't have the plans for the original, however, I would say more or less, it's probably along the lines of close to 15 overall feet high, because there's a pitch, because it's more of that craftsman design, so that increases the overall So staff's response to the appeal, and again, these are just, it's more in detail in your staff report, so the one item regarding the appellant, where they alleged that because one of the board members was absent at the last DRB meeting held on the 14th of January, those issues related to the case, including but not limited to design, mass, scale, and floor area, were not addressed by the board. Staff's response to that is basically that upon review of the records related to the DRB meeting held on that date for the subject case, there were no Brown Act laws and/or rules that govern procedures to be followed that that DRB meeting violated. At that time, there was a quorum, there were four board members present, and a motion was made to approve the project with condition with three in support, three yes and one no, and one of the board members arrived late to the meeting after the public portion of the meeting was closed, and the board members had begun deliberations, and so as a result, the board, that particular board member did not participate in the motion made by the board and remained absent for the subject case. However, the other board members that were present, they were present at most of all the previous DRB meetings for this case, so they were very familiar and they had knowledge about the previous history regarding the case. In terms of the, how the style changed from, or let me backtrack, the appellant's contend that there has not, that it has not been addressed by the board, the direction regarding the reducing the mass and scale with an eye toward reducing the square footage so as to adhere to the North Glendale Community Plan. Throughout the project's history, the plan has been modified, or the design has been modified throughout the process. It changed from the previous craftsman-inspired style to the current, which is a Spanish colonial-inspired design, and that was done with the objective to improve the overall mass and scale of the project. The previous proposal was a boxy design that did not include enough articulation to minimize the mass and the scale. However, with the Spanish design, it lends itself more to flexibility and the ability to manipulate the shapes and forms, and that's why they have now have gone along forward with this particular style. The North Glendale Community Plan and the Comprehensive Design Guidelines, they're tools where both serve as a guide to development within the city's neighborhoods, and that would also include Spar Hives. So in terms of this, in this particular instance, the plan does not mention that new projects, or it does, however, mention that new projects should fit well within the surrounding building fabric and land topography. While new projects not need to copy existing development, mass and scale should respect adjacent building context. But it doesn't say anything about or prohibiting a second-story or larger home greater than the neighborhood average. As a matter of fact, in Chapter 2 of the Design Guidelines, it doesn't mention that new projects may be larger than existing development, provided that the mass and scale of the new proposal is appropriate and transitions well to the existing context. This may require a second story, for example, to be set back from the front and the sides of the floor below, which this particular project does and has been further done by, through the modifications that I'll later refer to. It can also be achieved by providing an appropriate massing concept for proper fit into the neighborhood, relate to the predominant neighborhood pattern, massing configuration rather than one or two buildings that may be out of scale, and the scale proportions of the subject should, or the project should be designed to fit well within the surrounding context, even if its oversize, even if its overall size is larger. The guidelines also make suggestions or ways to diminish the apparent mass and scale, and that can be achieved through other use of material, breaks in the wall, breaks in the roof lines, different architectural features, as you all know, and this is all, again, mentioned in Chapter 2 of the Design Guidelines. There was also a mention about, in the repeal, about not following the, or the project not following the slope. While the subject property does have a gentle slope running north to south, based on the board's direction, the second floor mast was modified to provide relief along the south elevation. Additional conditions were imposed at the last DRB meeting that would further mitigate the overall mass and scale along the south elevation, and so at that meeting, the board conditioned the project to drop the overall house by approximately two feet, and that also would require lowering the 10-foot ceiling heights to nine-foot ceiling heights, again, thereby reducing the overall height and pushing the house one foot lower into the ground. Based on the board's direction, the second floor mast, again, was modified, additional conditions were imposed, and ultimately, the board made a motion to approve the project with the conditions to further address the mass and scale associated with the design. So based on the revisions made to the projects and substantiated by the DRB's vote of approval, the mass and scale of the project appears to be designed as conditioned to fit within the context of the neighborhood. The appellant also makes mention that they have new evidence and material facts that were not presented previously during... were not presented previously during the DRB meeting, which if considered, could have changed the ruling. However, no new evidence or material was included in their appeal. Typically, the board members do visit properties and review materials in their packets prior to the DRB meeting. Photos of the subject and neighboring properties were distributed at the DRB meeting, which is again, very typical. And the Photoshop rendering, which is included in your packet, it's merely a representation of how the project will look in relation to the abutting properties to the north and to the south. The board reviews these renderings in conjunction with the hardline drawings, which are the elevation drawings and the sections, which take a precedence over the renderings because they're more precise, as opposed to the Photoshop renderings.
Sorry, is this what you're referring to?
Yes, that's the one. So staff is recommending that the council sustain the DRB's decision to approve the project with the conditions. But what I'd like to now highlight was that after the appeal was filed, both parties, the appellant's and the property owner, the design team, they met and made a good-faith effort to resolve the appellant's concerns regarding the mass and scale. An effort was made by both parties to reach an agreement or a compromise. And as a result, revisions were made to the approved DRB plans, and they were agreed upon by both parties as follows. On the south side, which is the driveway side, the second-story mass is to be set back from the first floor and additional two feet towards the north. And that's reflected in the revised plans that I do not have in this presentation. It was the revised plan submitted on April 18th. So what I'll do is I'll go back to what was approved, and this elevation would height, to give you a better, or to, yeah, give you a better understanding as to what they would like to have done. So, no, I'll have a lighter. But on Sheet A 2.0, the south side, setback that second-story mass an additional two feet in. And you can actually see that reflected probably more clearly on the west elevation of Sheet A 2.0, where it shows a dimension of two feet per the appellant's condition.
2.0?
A 2.0. In the revised elevations.
Just here.
In addition, on Sheet A 1.2, and please stop me if I'm going too fast.
I don't have the 2.0.
A 2.0.
Maybe we can make sure we're all on the same page here. Hold on. There was, there was a separate packet that was handed out as part of this hearing. Madam Mayor, Members of the Council.
3.0. 5.0.
Yeah, that's it. That's, that's, I'll do that one.
No.
It's, it's, it's not in the packet that you have. It was a separate handout that was provided.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
So on A 2.0, it shows the shift on the west elevation, which is the one shown on the bottom of the page. It shows a two-foot shift per Lawler condition. The Lawlers are the appellant, abutting the property, subject site to the rear. There are also some bold items where they indicate, or the applicants has indicated how they've addressed the conditions of approval made by the board on January 14. So for example, just below that, on the same elevation, they show setback added per DRB condition number three, increase per DRB condition number two, so on and so forth. Also, the same modific, or similar modification is reflected on Sheet A 1.2. On the floor plan on the left-hand side, it compares, in your packet, it compares how the project has been modified from the original approval to the new, based again, on their efforts to come to some sort of agreement to reduce the mass of the building. So what they've done, or what this shows, is how that second story has been shifted over, the reductions that have taken place, again, based on their agreement or compromise. So upon both parties reaching an accord, these revised drawings dated April 18th of the 16th shows the applicant's attempt to address both the board's conditions of the approval on January 14th and the appellant's request. The revisions were accepted by the appellant, and ultimately, they, Mr. and Mrs. Lawler, submitted a letter to the planning staff requesting to withdraw their appeal to the city council. And Mr. Garcia has already alluded to the fact as to why that request to withdraw was not acted upon.
Have these changes been, have they, they haven't gone to DRB, though, have they?
No. Staff has conducted a preliminary review of the plans. The proposed revisions have not been reviewed by the board. Again, they were submitted to us just a few days ago, last, late last week. And we've been this whole time in the appeal phase, if you will, of coming before you.
So I'm sorry, I don't want to, but just for the record, for the mayor's question, if this hadn't been an appeal and the applicant had come and said, "I want to make these changes pursuant to both what the DRB directed me to and to do," would that have gone back to DRB, or would it likely have just been approved at the south level?
That's exactly what I wanted to follow up on. It, it does provide additional relief to the mass and scale, which is one of the board's conditions of approval. And hence, these revisions are within the spirit and intent of the originally approved plan. We have these situations very often, where there has been an approved project, and the applicant comes forth with, to staff, and presents some modifications. Staff has the ability to review those plans and make a determination as to whether or not those particular changes do merit going back to the Design Review Board, or can we take care of it at a staff level with the assistance of our design studio staff. And so in this instance, staff would opine that those modifications presented, again, are within the spirit and the intent of the originally approved plans. So potentially, we may not have remanded this back to the board as a plan amendment. If that were the case that we did, then a plan amendment would incur an additional fee, a new application, an additional fee of, to be submitted, or to be paid by the applicant for the plan modification, if that were the case. It would have to go through the process again as a plan amendment.
I, I thought I understood in the last, in the last DRB meeting, when one of the commissioners asked about the fees, and you said you had, whether they would have to pay another fee. And you went to someone and said, "I have to come back and tell you that they just paid to have the ability to come back to Design Review Board a few more times." That they, you understand what I'm saying?
Well, every time they come back, if it's a return for redesign, they have to pay. If it's continued for purposes of providing additional information, they would not pay.
For conditions? For conditions, or for just for redesign?
No, just for, to provide additional information to the board, so the board makes a, a motion to continue the project to a date certain, they wouldn't pay for that. But if they are coming back with a new design, or perhaps it's been approved, like in this case, and there's a modification, if it's significantly different than what was approved by the Design Review Board, that would be considered a plan amendment to an originally approved plan, and therefore would require new, resubmit, and they'd have to pay a new fee.
And what is that fee?
It's approximately $6,000, give or take. So with the assistance of our design studio staff, we, we try to work as much as possible with the applicants to get it to a point that staff feels comfortable, similar to our new streamlined process, our administrative design review process, where staff still, we still notify the neighbors and go through that motion. But again, any significant changes would go before the board, or if it's within the spirit of what potentially the board would approve, we can do it at administrative level. Now, going back to how it kind of meets the intent or the spirit of what was originally approved, this revision to the second floor has resulted in the reduction of the total floor area from 2,591 square feet to 2,511 square feet, which is mainly a reduction of the second floor, approximately, approximately 80 square feet.
I'm sorry, Milk, I, I hate to, you said, went from 2,591 to?
And that's reflected on your, the site plan on Sheet A 0.0 in the tabulation under Previous and Proposed. It reflects how the second floor was reduced from 894 square feet to 821 square feet. The overall width was reduced from, again, on the second floor, and that's reflected at the rear more clearly, from 32 feet 9 inches to 30 feet 0 inches. Again, all resulting in an overall improvement to the project as it relates to mass, scale, and floor area. And that's why staff is opine that it's within the spirit and intent of what was originally approved. Staff recommends that the city council uphold the DRB's approval as condition and include additional conditions based on the revised plans that were submitted and agreed upon both the appellant's and the applicant, Mr. Thibodeau, and the property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Heinz. And just for the record, because there's been some comments made on how does staff verify that these particular changes are properly addressed out in the field if it were to move forward. Typically, prior to submitting for plan check, the applicant is required to submit plans to the planning staff for review and verification that the plans are consistent with the plans that were presented and approved by the board, and that all conditions of approval are properly addressed and met. So any revisions made to the project will be reviewed by the planning staff. At that time, once again, the planning staff determines whether or not the proposed changes are within the spirit or intent or merit going back to the Design Review Board. The board also, what I would like to say is, in addition, during the construction process, the building inspector inspects the project in compliance with the approved building plans, and the planning staff will also conduct framing and DRB final inspections. If the built conditions are not, or do not adhere to the approved plans, the inspections would potentially be denied. That would conclude my presentation. If you have any further questions, I'm available.
Make sure I have the right information. The neighborhood average is how much?
Microphone.
I'm sorry.
It's right here.
15.
Average.
What's the neighborhood average, 1555?
For house size, yes, 1555.
And what is the, the existing square footage of this house?
2,511.
No, no, the existing.
1140. The existing currently right now is 1,140 square feet.
1140, and the neighborhood average is 1555.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now, is the appellant here, and you would like to speak, please? I'll give you 15 minutes?
Time's out to about six minutes.
Six minutes, okay, that's great. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members, thank you for your time and your attention. My name is Joe Lawler, my wife Liz and I are the appellant's, and we are the neighbors directly to the east. As you can tell from the city staff report, this project has a long and controversial history. On the understanding that this was something that we could do, Liz and I, my wife, attempted to resolve this matter directly with the applicants. We focused on what we thought was a simple, modest, easily accomplished modification that would address a problem that was inadequately addressed by the DRB. This modification simply added the two-foot setback to the south wall on the second story. The applicant was amenable. We went through several drawings, the final of which is dated April 19th. In these plans, there's a two-foot setback, added two-foot additional setback to the second story on the south wall. And significantly, the east wall of the second story, which is to the back, did not move at all, so that it did not move any further toward the east property line. The architect provided a letter clarifying some discrepancies. Both parties agreed to the plans, the city staff vetted and chronicled the agreement. And after coming to agreement on the drawings dated April 19th, and prior discussion with the city staff on the process, we submitted a letter of withdrawal of the appeal. Until yesterday, our understanding was that the appeal had been withdrawn, and we had amicably resolved this long contested issue. 7:00 PM, we were informed that the appeal would have to move forward, therefore, we are here to ask you to please formalize our agreement, including these negotiated changes and the conditions authorized by the DRB. But in the interest of providing some context, I'd like to address our initial appeal. It's no secret that there is a deep antipathy against mansionization in Spar Heights. When the story polls first went up on this project and the plans were announced, it quickly became a lightning rod for this deep feeling. People began to feel it was a tipping point on the issue. We reached out to our neighbors, and there's been tremendous response owing to a collective desire to find a way to move forward as a community that is more thoughtful, especially as the economy makes rampant home expansion an inevitability. In the minds of many in our neighborhood, this project came to represent the worst possible way to move forward. It was viewed as the biggest, showiest demonstration of a maxed-out design. The process has been contentious, as the community gave voice to its concerns with each hearing. Yet these community concerns slipped entirely out of the process in the January 14 DRB hearing, and this is one key reason we filed our appeal. Another significant issue was that board member Malikian was not included in the hearing. To be clear on this point, two of the four board members were only at two of the four hearings. Mr. Malikian was the only board member who had been at all four, and who had a complete knowledge of the history of this project. He was best positioned to understand how changes made to each design addressed or sidestepped each condition, as well as the overall concerns, intentions, and the context of these conditions. Mr. Malikian was en route to the January 14 hearing but running late. We asked that our case be moved later in the docket, but were refused. We think there is no question that Mr. Malikian's voice would have significantly added to a more rigorous analysis of the plans and very possibly altered the outcome. But in a nutshell, the problem that is evidenced here this evening is that, is that the city needs a better process for evaluating home expansion in Spar Heights. Pitting neighbor against neighbor, asking the DRB to resolve the problem with one hand tied behind its back, is paving a path to the city council resolving each and every problem on a case-by-case basis. Allowing a structure to span the width of these narrow lots and to push the bulk of the box on top of box toward the rear neighbor is simply old, bad thinking. Our properties are cheap by jowl. Our tiny backyards are our only buffer. Four small yards conjoined accomplish an agreeable natural buffer. One property can destroy it. The North Glendale Community Plan is a wise document, and it speaks in many ways to these issues of mass and scale, and also to building additions on properties on a hill, which it is. Our suggestion to you today- Our suggestion to you today is to honor the North Glendale Community Plan more faithfully now, and to look forward to a building code that reduces the FAR, the maximum height limit, and the house-to-lot ratio for the historically significant Spar Heights residential neighborhood. Expanding one's home is a reasonable expectation, but destroying the unique historic character of Spar Heights in the process is not. So yes, we remain strong advocates for reducing future home size in Spar Heights. We don't believe that a few existing mansions justify all future mansions. We are a city and a neighborhood in flux on this issue. Do we believe this particular house is too big, too massive, wrong scale for our neighborhood? Yes, we do. But Liz and I would like to move on with our lives. It's been two years. We made the conscious decision not to engage the neighborhood on this appeal, but to attempt to address the issue directly with the applicant. We've done so, and we have come to an agreement with our neighbor regarding modification that finally addresses the most problematic aspect of the design. City staff has vetted this process, has signed off on the modified plans, and so we come to you this evening to ask you to include these modifications in the DRB's conditions of January 14, and to approve them tonight so that these modifications are protected as we move forward. I thank you.
So if I might ask you, so what you're saying is that you still think this house is too big, too massive?
My candid opinion, yes.
Thank you.
So with the conditions that DRB imposed on them, as well as the conditions that you asked them to do, if they comply with all of it and staff stamps these plans with the conditions, are you okay with it?
We are agreed to go forward, yes.
Okay, because I remember this case from 2014, and there were, if I'm not mistaken, there were balconies in the rear of the property looking over your yard, and when I look at the plans today, the only thing facing, from the second story facing your property is the bathroom and two master closets, and one of the windows for the staircase going up, which is an improvement. I understand your position as well. I want to thank you for being a good neighbor. You always mention them as my neighbors, and I think that's very important in any dispute or any disagreement. So with the current conditions that DRB imposed on them and your conditions, you're okay with the?
Yes, we are.
Project to move forward. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The applicant? This is 15 minutes for the team. Is there just you, sir? It'll be 15 minutes for all of you, one or three.
Hi, my name's Robert Thibodeau. I'm the architect. Is that too loud?
What was your name again? I'm sorry.
Robert Thibodeau.
Thibodeau, okay, thank you.
So I think we have an agreement, and we're trying to move forwards in a friendly fashion, and so I'm really here, I guess, more to answer questions regarding the, I guess, the modifications for the design. I would like to plant the seed that some of the language that was just used, mansionization, talking about a 2,500-square-foot house. I'm sure that many of you have been in houses much, much larger than that. This is a three-bedroom house. So it's 22 feet high. It's not particularly tall house at this point. 28 feet's the height limit, so we're six feet below the height limit. That slowly was reduced by those meetings that we've had that you guys alluded to. And so a 2,500, I think, an 11-square-foot, three-bedroom house on a 6,500-square-foot lot, I don't know if that qualifies as mansionization. But we shifted at the Lawler's request, just so we're on the same page. So this is the front view of the house, is seen from Buena Vista, and the house, per the DRB's conditions last time, we reduced the 10-foot, we have eight-foot ceiling heights upstairs, so that's down to what you can have, and then we had 10-foot downstairs below, that was reduced to nine feet, and then actually down to eight feet for the frontmost portion of the project, because we had the cathedral ceiling, we could drop the plate heights down to eight here. And then we pushed the overall, you can see the corners, this is the grade line, so we pushed the floor level below grade at where the slope was higher. So the house is basically down to the driveway level at the low part of the site. That's how we reduced, we got the height down, the additional amount, and we put the previous to the current on here, and we put a dotted line. And then what the Lawlers, what we negotiated with them was to slide it over two feet, because we had additional setbacks at the second floor. If you're facing the front elevation, both on the right and on the left, because of their view corridor, they have a large tree on this side on their property, which you guys might have seen or driven by, and so their view is mostly sort of over the driveway portion of this project. And this shift to the left allows them a little bit more view. And we were happy to talk to them and worked out the plans. It did reduce the square footage a little bit, because in addition to shifting, there were certain things that had to be shrunk. It was just the way it worked out. And we added the other items that the review board wanted, the balcony at, and then we, this part here, they wanted a break, so there's a 1'6' setback between this face wall and here, where you've got a little piece of roof coming over the entry court. Because of the colors, this actually looks further forwards than what it really is. There's, the way you come in this house is through a patio. There's a patio here, and then you come in through the side, it's the front door, and that allowed us to have sort of a bigger decorative window facing the street. And, I don't know, I liked the patio, coming in off of the patio, I thought was a good way to come in.
Did you change the front windows? Because I heard one of the, I think one of the board members said that they weren't quite the style of the Spanish cologne.
They were changed, I think there were three even ones at one point in time, like earlier, in an earlier generation. There was also the roof line was changed in the front. There's been a lot of changes, so this, we had changed this, when it was a Craftsman style, it had a gable-end roof originally, but when you have a gable end, you've got that point coming at you, so the house is higher. So we changed it to a hipped roof all the way around, and in fact, this was a hipped roof at one point in time, which is why these three windows were even, because you had a straight line coming across here. But then the board member suggested that we go back from a hip to a gable just in this one portion, which looks, I think, better also, and that allowed us to give a more of a tripartite, I think is the term Jay used. Was he? All right. Where we had the larger center one and the two smaller complimentary side ones, and I don't know if that's exactly what you're remembering from before.
Do we have more cards?
Yes, we have a lot of cards. Have you completed your, does anyone have questions for? Okay, then, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have seven cards, seven speakers, so we'll...
I'm the owner of the house.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, you still have time.
Tom Heinz. Just want to say that this project, I mean, in front of the city, it's been, you know, two, three years, something like that, but the thing is, I didn't really want to destroy the house, I like the house, but it has a bad foundation, so anyone that comes into that house is going to have to tear it down, and there's just no way around it. It's a 100-year-old house, the electrical, and it's not up to current codes, you know, the plumbing, everything in it needs to be gutted and done. So it's not like I came in wanting to destroy the house. I have lived there for 10 years, you know, recently married, you know, family is growing, so I want to stay in Glendale. I was born in Glendale, born in Verdugo Woodlands, I went to school Verdugo Woodlands, you know. I've been in this city a long time, but when I started, I just went by the zoning laws, you know? That's, you know, that's what you look at, you look at the zoning laws, you know? So, and that was why the house was such a lightning rod now, but at this current project, and hopefully you'll agree to the house with the Lawlers' conditions, but current project is 22 feet high. My neighbor's house is 20 feet high, even though it's a single story. The neighbor's house to the north side is, you know, a two-story on the side next to mine. It's really a normal-sized house. There's two other houses on the block, my side of the street, that are, you know, about the same square footage, and there's actually the northeast house, the house north of the Lawlers, I believe, is also two stories and part of it, so, I mean, there are lots of two-story houses around. Anyway, that's it.
Okay, so that was Tom? Tim? Okay, thank you. Card. Okay, and Robert Thibodeau, you've already spoken, so we have five cards. Patricia Ortega. Oh, Patrick, I'm sorry. Did you like to speak? Joe Lawler, already spoke. Mary Ann Jennings. Followed by Grant Michaels, followed by Michael Morgan.
My name is I...
Five minutes. Five minutes, Grant.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Grant Michaels. I'm the president of the Montrose, Verdugo City Spar Heights Neighborhood Association. I will try and speak for our board members that we have in attendance tonight.
All three of you?
All three cards. I'll try and get through all our points.
All right, I'll give you an extra few minutes since...
I appreciate that.
You're speaking for three.
We have commented on this project from the start, going back to May of 2014, and have taken an objective position on the project. Our comments, when we have made them to the DRB, focus specifically on the design and the design features. We do believe that Mr. Heinz has the right and the ability to demolish and remodel the house. We are not saying he doesn't have the right to do that. We've met with Mr. Heinz, as well as the Lawlers', and we understand that redesigning the house and building a new house is the right thing for him to do. We are supportive of that. With meeting with both of them, we did offer to facilitate a meeting and discuss compromise between both parties. That offer was not accepted. We came prepared tonight to support the Lawlers' in their appeal, as we learned that they did appeal the DRB decision and the approval. That colored our board's decision of whether we were going to file an appeal. As of yesterday afternoon, we were prepared to come here, speak, give our comments, and support the Lawlers' in their appeal, discussing our concerns, which have been compatibility in the mass and scale of this project. With the changes that have happened tonight, as well as the new information that was presented here at the hearing, we're trying to play catch-up a little bit. My comments are going to likely be a little bit out of order. So we do want a reduction in mass and scale compatible with the neighborhood of Spar Heights and the North Glendale Community Plan. We are not opposed to any one particular metric of a design. If a designer is proposing tall ceilings, 10-foot, 12-foot in a design, we will not oppose that one specific metric. Also, we do not oppose specifically a two-story design. As mentioned, the adjoining house is a single story, but has a very tall peaked roof. We will look at the overall mass and scale. A single-story house with a peaked roof at 20 or 22 feet tall does not appear as massive as a two-story house with a much flatter roof line. It simply has more mass. Our letter to council details more of our comments historically, I'm going to try and not go into that. With mass and scale as the principal objection, we were prepared to discuss the floor area ratio that expanded from 35% and through subsequent DRB hearings, was increased twice, ultimately going to 40%, the maximum of what is allowed on the lot. The design prior to what was presented tonight was at 2,591 square feet, which made it the largest home in the area from the diagram that they had, given that the largest lot in the area is 8,000 square foot. Theirs is 6,500 square foot. So from a standpoint of looking at the lot size and the house size, theirs is the largest home on what would be a modest lot in Spar Heights. With the amount, with the square foot now at 2,511 square feet, that still puts it at the largest square foot, square footage in Spar Heights by about three feet, still on a 6,500-square-foot lot, when the largest lot in the neighborhood is 8,100 square feet. While we support the reversal of the DRB decision, we're not specifically challenging their expertise or judgment. We do understand the articulation and the conditions of approval and seek direction from the board to explain how something is compatible. Our goal has been to develop a design, develop compromise of something that is compatible with the neighborhood and enhances our neighborhood. Board members Benlian and Chechnian approved with conditions. Board member Simonian did want to see the board, did want to see the project returned to the board for one last time to have the conditions reviewed. Chair Mardian believed that staff could accomplish, be carrying out the conditions, and ultimately was the vote to approve the project. Board member Malikian is the board member who was at every, all four of the hearings, and was the most outspoken about the mass and scale. We would have wanted to hear what he had to say on this final hearing, and were disappointed that he was not able to weigh in and offer his opinion. Our association values the opinions of the experienced board members of Mr. Simonian and Mr. Malikian. They have articulated very well how a project would be compatible and how the conditions could be implemented to achieve those goals. The approval of the DRB hearing, we felt we really didn't understand how the conditions could be implemented, how it could be made compatible. We were expecting with the appeal to be able to discuss that further. The new information that was presented and the new changes, we haven't seen. We don't, we really don't have any analysis of how that would play out. At this point, we're seeking your opinions, your guidance, to explain how you feel about the project, and we would support sending this project back to the DRB with your opinions, your guidance, so that they could look at the project as a whole with all of the conditions, with the new changes, and be able to explain how it is compatible and come up with that measure of compromise.
Can you wrap it up?
Sure.
Grant, please.
That is all I really have to say.
So you have not seen these changes? This is the first time you've seen?
This is the first time we've seen the changes.
Likewise, but, okay.
As of, as of yesterday afternoon, we did not know there were further discussions. We were expecting this to proceed as a standard appeal.
I'm sorry, which changes are you referring to?
The changes that were presented in the current staff report to you that were dated, I believe, the 19th of this month. The last information we've reviewed as a board was from the January 14 hearing.
Okay, so the...
Any information since that we...
The conditions that was imposed on the project and is reflected here or depicted here, you haven't seen the new design or the same design with the changes?
We have only seen the conditions that were opposed on January 14. Since January 14, we have not seen any changes or been part of those discussions.
When was the last time that this went to DRB, was when?
14.
The January 14.
And, and the changes-
Why don't we let, why don't we let, on that issue, why don't we let the speaker finish his comments, and then I think staff can more clearly identify whether, because it's really just, what you have before you is just-
And I have one more question before we move on. In your opinion, the, what makes it compatible to the area? I want to understand it, because you represent the homeowners association as important. What makes it compatible with the, with the area?
Looking at the design, it appears oxy-massive, and mass and scale was discussed and was the principal concern at every DRB hearing. At each subsequent hearing, the floor area ratio grew. In some way, the mass or the scale of this project continued to grow, and the community, the neighbors, were saying it is excessive as it stands.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, let's see. Will, is that, those are all the cards that I have?
I don't know if you wanted to allow either side, either applicant or the appellant or rebuttal.
Right. The, one more card? Oh, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. I'm sorry. Ron Scott. Terribly sorry. Too many papers up here.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Ron Scott. I live at 3510 Buena Vista Avenue, and I'm here to discipline myself. I'm here in support of Joe and Liz. I'm the individual who happens to live between the two houses, if you know Buena Vista. I'm the one who happens to live between the two houses that were teardowns before. I live in a little tiny 1,000-square-foot house between two very large, over 2,000-square-foot houses. And I'm here tonight just to support the Lawlers because I paid the price by not getting involved earlier, and I don't want to do that again. I'm seeing Spar Heights, we've lived in Spar Heights for over 20 years, and seen some significant changes, and I'm disappointed to see the direction it's going. So, I'm just here for moral support to the Lawlers and the neighbors. This property has been a lightning rod, and I do see it as mansionization. I, my wife lived in Downey, and to see what's been happening there is horrible. So, I plan to take, get more involved in trying to keep Spar Heights what could potentially be a historic district change. And so, again, I'm just here to support the Lawlers and had no prepared comments, and I'll sit down.
But I need to, I need a clarification, because I'm a little confused. So, the Lawlers appealed this. They're the appellants. They thought it was too big, mass, scale, but then they had an agreement recently with the architect, with the owners, the applicants, and the Lawlers are now saying, "We're okay with it." So, are you saying that you, you're okay with it too? Because that, in a way, is supporting the Lawlers? Or are you saying that they were right to object from the first place, to appeal it from the first place because of the mass and scale?
The former. Excuse me, the latter.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes.
Which was that? So, you-
It's too big.
You still think it's too big? Okay.
Still think it's too big.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll-
Well, before we close the public hearing, I don't know if either the applicant or the appellant have any comments.
Either one, Lawlers have anything to say, or Tibidoo?
Yeah, I'm a little disappointed that we thought we had a negotiated solution with the Lawlers, and we worked hard with staff to come up with a solution that we thought was, and frankly, went back and forth over a timeframe that was very tight, and I really feel like we're getting the rug pulled out from under us tonight. You know, we, we were approved 3 to 1 in January. They, they appealed us really largely on basis of their rear yard view, which I understand. You know, we all like our views, but, but I thought we had a solution here that everybody could agree to. I think the attorney's worked hard on this. You might want to talk to him about it. And staff's worked hard on this. You might want to talk to them about it, and we redrew the plans, and I'd like to see it go through. Thank you.
Just for the record, I mean, Mr. Lawler, I don't know that anyone has, has upset the agreement that was made between them privately. Is that correct, sir?
Correct. I would like to just confirm that.
Right, so I don't know that-
That in fact, we are prepared to move forward. We do believe we have an agreement. The reason that we came tonight was because we thought we had an agreement, and then the fact that we had to continue the appeal for these other reasons then opened up the issue to other possibilities that could happen. So, we wanted to be clear that our understanding was, we had an agreement with our neighbor, we're prepared to move forward. Of course, I think what you're seeing here tonight is there is a much larger issue at play, and there are real deep feelings about this issue in our neighborhood. And that's why I address some of my comments tonight to those issues, so that moving forward, it may be present in all of our minds.
Thank you. And with that, I can close the, the public hearing and comments from open for discussion with the, my colleagues. Who would like to go first on this one?
Well, I mean, I would just like to point out the unusual nature of the proceedings in that in January, a DRB, 3 to 1, with several, 14 conditions or whatever there were, approved it. It's-
Four.
Four.
Four. Four conditions. One of them was reduce the mass and scale, though, if I'm not mistaken. And then the appellant came in and said, "I don't like this. I want to appeal it." And through negotiations with the, with the applicant, they seemed to reach some sort of consensus on a design that the Lawlers would support. Therefore, they withdrew the appeal, and that's what one of the letters here says. The problem is that there's others standing behind the Lawlers who aren't necessarily next-door neighbors, but are neighborhood residents who still have objections to the That's what happens when you file an appeal. Probably if you guys had worked this out ahead of time and had not filed the appeal, this project would have been on its way. But where would it have been? It would have been back to the DRB for approval of seeing if those conditions were met, right? Or was that a staff?
No, that would, staff would probably make that determination.
You wouldn't have to go back to the DRB.
Not necessarily, and I doubt it, just, and staff can chime in too, but I don't think so, because it's within the envelope of what the DRB approved.
But when, when DRB says reduce the mass and scale, though, how is that?
Well, I don't think, they had said that earlier. I think the four conditions on this one were a little more direct, or, you know, so push the roof of mass here at the front, that sort of thing, too.
And let me also say, there are just a boatload of plans here from each DRB submission, and a lot of times I find myself believing I'm looking at the right attachment, A 2.0, and it's the one from 2014. So, I'd just like to say that you guys didn't make it any easier, counsel. Okay, this is, this is 2014, this set here, so. My general feeling is that, my general feeling is that the house is still a little bit too large for the area. And then when you say, "What makes it incompatible or what makes it compatible?", I think it's, I think you know it when you see it. It's something that's very hard to, to specify and to put into words. I wouldn't mind sending this back to the DRB with, with the particular adjustments that have been made, and, and my comments that I think the home is too large. I'd like to see it smaller. I do, you know, I do agree with the comments made by my DRB appointee, Mr. Simonian, that it is too large for the neighborhood, even though it might fit within the zoning envelope that's permitted. That doesn't mean that's what we should be permitting on every occasion. So, if you ask me, I'd like to see it knocked down, several hundred square feet, less massive, less in scale, make the adjustments that make the Lawlers happy, and that's, that's where I'd like to see it go, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Nef- Kelly?
Just want to understand which direction we're going to, because, first of all, if you're sending this back to the DRB, I don't think they should pay that $6,000 again. Doesn't matter which way we're going, but I don't think they should pay $6,000 again. It's-
I agree with you.
One of the issues that I had before, when you send any project written for redesign, and you pay that $6,000 every time, it's, it's not a right thing to do. That's, I know it's a different discussion, but we'll talk about that later. This area, can I ask a few questions from staff, please, before we- This is, this is a .40 area, right? The floor area?
Yes, it's .40 for the first 10,000 square feet and .10 for each square footage of lot thereafter.
So, that's, that's, it's an R1R in here.
It's R what? Low-density. It's not R1R. R1R is hillside. It's R1.
R1, but .40.
Correct.
And I was looking at this rendering that shows the relation of this new design to the neighbors. When I was on this, this area before, before the dinosaurs were around, we usually had this, this, I don't want to, the problems that had issues to have a street level, an eye-level comparison as to new one compared to their neighbors. So, you can see, not with the trees and everything else, so it would show the relationship. That's how you see mass and scale. Because if you can compare your house to your neighbors, the one that you're building, the new one, the new design, it's easier for the neighbors to understand, too, because this story pose, I know it was pushed for, I can't tell what it is, to be honest. See all these lines going through? You can still see through. You see the mountains. When it's built, it's a totally different, different story, because you don't see the mountains anymore in the second story. I call it, so. So, I think this is just a suggestion for upcoming projects. If, if there is an issue with the compatibility, the best thing to do is to show your relationship to your neighbors on an eye-level, street level, because this street, I was there this morning, I looked at, you know, I went all the way around, and I went to the other street to see how is it going to be played to their house, and the street slopes down from broad view. Am I correct? Broad view-
Correct, to sun view.
Right.
And then it continues down to Arlington.
It slopes down. So, as far as mass and scale, when, you know, they, you talk about a foot here from the first floor, a foot from the second floor, these are some sort of a Band-Aid solutions, if you will, because cutting nine inches from one floor and eight inches from the other floor, it's not going to make any difference on the mass and scale. What they usually do is they, they grade it down, they bring the house down a lot, like two feet. You still have 24 feet, but it's not, it's not as imposing to your neighbors as, you know, that's one of the suggestions that I would have had, but it's, it's the other thing. But one other thing is this area, most of the garages are in the, in the rear, right?
Correct, with some exceptions, but yes, most of them are detached at the rear.
I think this is the, if you want to have your cake and eat it too, because nobody's going to demolish a 1,200-square-foot house and build a 1,500-square-foot house to, to be average with the neighborhood. So, instead of having a, a two-story building, when they come to, to the design studio, we asked them to study that, that, the option of having a garage in the front, and then they can use all the concrete driveways and everything else that is behind it to put most of that mass of the second story on the first floor, on the, on the ground level. Then you will have maybe one bedroom or one and a half bedroom on the, on the second floor, and it will reduce your size of the second story, which is more acceptable to the neighbors, I believe. Although, yes, you will have a garage in the front, same, same level, same, same, same setback line, if you will. But you, I looked at this thing, the 400 square feet or few hundred square feet that Councilman and the Attorney is talking about, it's about 400 or 500 square foot in the, where the driveways and the rear patio is, it could be there. So, you won't have a 400, 500-square-foot garage in the backyard, because right now they have a 30 by 30 backyard. It's very small, so. But I'm not saying to redesign it that way, but these are, these are the issues that I think the design review has to look at it. And the other thing is, I don't want to undermine the design review board members, one versus the other. The decision was made, and I think they're all capable, and, you know, they all have different opinions. I don't want to just go there and say, "Because one was there and one wasn't there, somehow the, the issue would have been different." I think they're all capable on their, you know, different, different levels. Just want to see if I have any questions from you. Okay, that's, that's all I have for, yes.
Just following up on the garage, we, we generally look at the predominant pattern in the neighborhood, and that's really important for the board, and so, we often find that houses with the garage at the front seem more massive. They often seem like they span more of the lot, but I understand your point. And to that point, I just wanted to clarify something about the idea of reducing the square footage. Originally, through various iterations of this, there were three bedrooms on the second floor, and the board specifically asked to move one of those bedrooms down so that the footprint of the second floor could be reduced and we could get the setbacks that we have now. The Heinzes were reluctant to do that, but ultimately agreed and moved a bedroom downstairs. If you look at the second floor right now, there's not a lot of meat in those bedrooms, and if you're asking to reduce the square footage of the house to significantly change the mass, there's not much change that's able to happen at the second floor, where I think most of people's concern about the mass exists. So, I just wanted to add that, so you can consider that in your deliberation.
There are two bedrooms, and they already cut one foot from each to make that two feet variation on the second floor, so there's not much you can do.
Yeah, so they did move the bedroom downstairs. There's, there's probably room to cut the square footage of the, of the first floor, but that's not going to have a huge impact on, on the massing overall.
Yeah, by moving the bedroom from the second floor to the first floor, the only place, because this is a two-story house and the garage is in the back, the only place they could have put it is behind the family room. So, your, the entire house gets cut off from the backyard because you have a bedroom facing your backyard, and all your living space is in the middle, basically. So, but these are the things that it's their, their prerogative, it's their house, the interior floor plan, we don't usually get into and make a decision, but I think when you ask, when a project comes back four or five times, there's a, there's a, there's an issue. And I, I think it's just the, understanding the, the design guidelines is the issue. So, I don't mind sending this back to the design review board, but I, I don't know cutting 200 square feet, 300 square feet is going to make a difference on the mass and scale. The thing that, what would make a difference on mass and scale is what they ask for, is to move the second floor two feet back, or push it back, or put a balcony, or not to have a large balcony facing their backyard. I think that's, that's, that's what it is. But if they, if, if, I would vote for this project to go back to the design review board with all the conditions together to present it to them, to, for the board to give the blessing, and tell the homeowners associations why they think it's, it's compatible with the neighborhood.
Okay.
That's, that's my, my thing. I don't think reducing the size by 300 square feet is going to make any difference, because if you, if you're in a .30 area, you still will have, I don't know, almost 2,000-square-foot house. So, then you say, "Oh, maximize that." And it's not the, the square footage, it's just the design and mass and scale, how you, how you approach the, the design issue. But sending it back, because since they made all the, all the revisions already, if you send it back to the design review, they can say, "Yeah, this looks good." But I don't want it to go and start as a, as a new project, if that's, I, I, again, I, we can't get into that right now, but.
Thank you. Finished? Okay, thank you very much. I want to thank the neighbors and everyone who sent in emails and letters and, and the, of course, the architects, et cetera, for being here tonight to, to go through this. I want to begin my remarks with the North Glendale Community Plan, because we're just getting started, or not started, but we're going to be approaching, talking about the South Glendale Plan, and then eventually the East-West Glendale Plan, Community Plan. There are certain guidelines in the North Glendale Community Plan which I think are relevant to this project. And I know Milka tried, you know, you used, you cited some of them. The ones that I am impressed with are, number one, it discourages massive building, that builds should not have a monumental appearance, and that they should balance the uniqueness of the neighborhood and be sensitive and consistent to the neighborhood. of the neighborhood and be sensitive and consistent to the neighborhood's scale. Now, Mr. Tibadu, you mentioned that you don't understand how a 2,500 square foot house is a mansion. It is a mansion when the houses in the neighborhood are 1,100 square feet. It's all relative. So my point in bringing up these guidelines is, I don't like to, I, I kind of take, when words like, these are guidelines, and we don't, you know, really have to stick to them, or this is boilerplate, and we don't have to really, you know, it's kind of like, maybe it works, and whatever we think works. Guidelines are guidelines, and I think that we, we should go by them as best we can, because otherwise, these community plans are a waste of our time. When you said that he changed the design from, you changed the design from Craftsman to, to the Spanish, you did that, but you didn't necessarily, when you did that, comply with the conditions that the DRB had put, put on the, the build. Every single meeting, the whole discussion was about mass and scale up until the very end. And even at that last meeting, one, one of the, the board members said, well, they do have a problem with mass, they're almost there, but they're not quite there. In the staff report, and I, and I found this really peculiar, in the staff report, it says, I have to read this word for word, "The two-story project, as conditioned, appears to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood despite its size, and is an appropriate design." I, you know, when you say despite its size, I mean, you're telling me right off the bat that this is some kind of a huge build in this neighborhood. That's the way I interpreted that. I'm sorry that the neighbors didn't get to see this. I think it might have changed things, I don't know. I want, I would like to see this go back to Design Review, I, the DRB, I would like for them to see this and tweak it, or okay it. I would feel better. I'm not an architect, I'm not a designer, I can't say that this is solving that problem of mass and scale. I don't know that. Looks pretty good to me, but I'm not an expert. They are. They are appointees, we trust them, and I, I would like for them to, to look at this. I mean, they've been in this process all along, I would like for them to be in the process until the end. And I agree with the Lawlers, there is an issue with the process, and I think we have, I, I would like to see them, I agree with my colleagues, that this should go back to Design Review. With the conditions, with all the conditions, the agreement that was made, and the conditions that the, the DRB cited on the 14th. So that concludes my comments on the issue. Shall we, yes?
So what kind of motion?
Well, you need a motion to return it back. You should do close the hearing, I think you did close the hearing.
Yes, I did close the hearing.
Remand it, to remand it back to the Design Review Board. The only thing I, I would caution and question is, what's the direction for them to do? Because if it, I mean, my view happens to be that if it's to look at that plan and determine whether it's consistent, I got to suspect they're going to say it is, because it's really just a smaller project than what they approved. So I think if you really want it to be a meaningful review by the DRB, you have to give them some direction on, even if it's, that is the view of the council that's too big, it's too massive in, in mass and scale, and that they needed to look at further making it more compatible, at least something, because right now, if it's just look at the plan...
How about if we say, "Scale it down"?
Well, if you say, "Scale it down," predicated on, on the adjustments that have been agreed to at this point, I think everyone will look at that, say, well, it is scaled down. You can say, well, scale it down further. I think Mr. Grapetian's point is well taken, that at some point, when you scale it down to something that is meaningful, it's basically a redesigned project. And so to say, you know, keep it the way it is, but make it different, I think is somewhat of an impossible task that doesn't really benefit either the, the appellant or the applicant, given what they've been able to do up to this point. Now, I heard you say, said that it was, you felt it was too big, too massive. To me, that suggests a redesign. If you, and I'll defer to city attorney, but if the, if the direction, perhaps as an interim almost, is to have staff, to try to follow through as they would at a staff level, based on the DRB's design, and again, the DRB did approve this, and staff was recommending it as consistent, perhaps that's one thing to do, to see if we can get to a, a good place for everyone concerned prior to a full and complete redesign. Because if we can't get there at that staff level, then I would submit to you that, as Mr. Garcia, I think, is indicating, you probably need to send it back for a redesign. Because you're trying to put, in, in, in the, the concerns that you had, you know, 10 pounds in a five-pound bag. The flip side is, as Mr. Grapetian indicates, property is what it is. And I would venture a guess that if they, if the applicant came back with a, a front-loaded, or at least a, a garage, that is, at the front of the building, and the predominant design or, and theme of the neighborhood is driveway with detached garage in the back, perhaps the appellant is fine with that, but you're going to get an appeal from someone that lives across the street. And we start to talk about what is neighborhood compatibility, and I think you said it very well, you know it when you see it. And so you're, you're constantly trying to push and compartmentalize and squish down a, a project, still respecting private property rights, and understanding that my rights begin where yours end, and vice versa. So unless Mike would, would offer you otherwise, and to the extent that I think the changes that have gotten to this point maybe are a good starting point, other refinements can be made, or not, but the point being that maybe you allow everybody, the appellant, the applicant, and the staff, to see if they can make what is before them all work. I mean, it is unfortunate that we have this hearing scheduled, you had to go through with this hearing at this point, you couldn't just rescind the, the appeal. But maybe that's an interim step before a complete redesign, because I think that's, ironically enough to the applicant, it's probably the fairest thing to do for him, is to say, redesign it.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
Well, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I probably would have to just disagree with that. I know where Mr. Cho is coming from, the problem I have with that is the staff has already blessed us, they've already looked at and deemed it to be compatible. So if you're just sending them back to staff to have...
Despite its size.
Despite its, right, despite its size, but, you know, staff, staff looked at this in comparison to what the DRB approved, and has said, and you could have been wrong, Phil, but...
And I, I was just going to say thing, the same thing. Staff was prepared to recommend the DRB's approval with those conditions. They have, they have gone back amongst themselves, and they've reduced that scale and mass even more. So at this point, I'm not sure what staff would do to the design, other than, is that the same thing back to you?
I actually, my, my thought is, this is just my thought, that if the council, because what I heard is at least two of you thinking the house is too big in terms of mass and scale, that you, you return it to the DRB to consider, reconsider the mass and scale, and then it would be up to the DRB to determine whether or not they could further condition it to reduce it, or whether they would have to return for the redesign.
Okay.
Or, or I might add, whether it's sufficient, and they do find it compatible, given the revisions.
Yes, that's, that's, yes, yes.
Look, I think, I, believe me, I, I say this based on experience, every time I, I made a decision, half the room was happy, the other, the other half was, you know, really, really trying to rip my head off sometimes. But I think by just saying, oh, it's too big, I don't think, I use, you can, you, you know it when you see it, unfortunately, we can't, that, we don't have that option. I think what we need to do is send it back to DRB with all the conditions, you know, depicted on this project, make all the changes, so the neighborhood can see what's going to DRB, because there's a notification again. So they will see the new plans with all the changes, and form their own opinion as well, with the changes that the, the neighbors wanted in the, you know, I'm sorry, the last name of the appellant's.
Lawler.
I knew that, I was just testing him, it was okay. You know, with all the changes that the neighbors wanted, the appellants wanted, and go back to the DRB, the DRB, all the five members will be there and say, okay, these are all the changes, if, then if the mass and scale is still too, too massive, or it's not compatible, the neighbor will have a chance to, to make a comment, as well as a board member. But I think just saying it's too big and scale it down, it means you're telling them, redesign this house, because they can't scale it down the way it is right now, there's no, nothing they can, they can cut. It's not 5,000 square feet to cut 400, 500 foot from.
So could that be our, our motion?
I guess then, based on, the motion would be to remand it to the DRB to consider the revised plan, the April 19th plan, and determine whether, if full DRB or the DRB acting...
It's more or less like a do-over for the DRB based on new information.
And, and if it does address the mass and scale to the North Glendale. Do we have a motion then?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Kusakian, for our call.
Councilmembers Friedman, Grapetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes. Thank you.
I meant Sinanian.
Did you say, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's late.
Well, you kind of mumbled, I just thought it sounded divine.
Air divine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Okay, next item?
Next item is oral communications, this is a five-minute portion, discussion is limited, item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes, council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, further matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. Okay, we have two cards. Is, is Ina Jean Berger here, still here?
No, doesn't look like she is.
No, okay. Margaret Hammond?
May I just walk around the room, do you mind?
Oh. But what, do we talk, talk amongst ourselves? What's that? That's the only card? Any reports? Any written communication? Margaret?
That she left?
She's downstairs. All right.
The restroom?
Oh. What's the protocol here, Mr. Garcia?
It's up to you, you can, yeah, it's, it's your discretion.
Well, let's see, at the Oscars, they waited, didn't they? She's in the elevator. Okay, so we'll, we'll give her one minute. Give her one minute. Margaret, I wouldn't do this for anyone but you. She should, she should have taken the three minutes in the beginning. That's what it's there for. Margaret Hammond?
Thank you very much, I'm sorry to delay you, it's the end of the evening.
Fine.
All right, Madam Mayor, members of council, city staff, my name is Margaret Hammond, and I've been a resident of Glendale for, what, almost 60 years? And I have a, we have a problem. I and many other citizens would like to know when and where the agreement was made to enable the Armenian Museum to be placed in Central Park. This park is in South Glendale, where there is a severe shortage of parks. There are 100,000 residents in South Glendale. The impact fees, amounting to 16 million, were 90 to 95 percent from projects that were in South Glendale, built in South Glendale, and the fees were to be used there, but they're being used in North Glendale. Also, we would like to know why one ethnic group have gifts, the right to be granted to them, property that belongs to the public, and that other ethnic groups, such as the Jewish, or Mexican, or Irish, or Filipino, whatever, et cetera, et cetera, do not have, and do not get, do not ask for. The question of legality of giving our park property, our precious park property, to a private group, and using 2 million of our impact fees to facilitate the Armenian Museum being located in Central Park. Only 350,000 was allocated in the parks' fees in, in the original agreement, but suddenly, there was, 2 million dollars was allocated. I didn't hear anything about it before the March 28th. The figure was upped by the 2 million dollars from the impact fees. When Verdugo Park was slated to have a, a 2 million renovation, but then the citizens from North Glendale protested loudly, and the plans were scrapped. And so the 2 million dollars was allotted to the then unknown plan for Central Park that night. I never heard about it before, and I listened to it all. I feel this is unfair to South Glendale, and illegal by not polling the citizens of South Glendale, who are adversely affected by taking of our parks, our park, and by the city council action. Hopefully, when the city is partitioned with five districts, we, we will hope to have representation, and someone on the council to stand up for the citizens of South Glendale in a situation like this. Should the residents of South Glendale start a petition, or get an attorney to fight for our rights, since we do not seem to have a concerned person representing our, our property and financial rights? I object in having that museum in Central Park. I was never asked, I never heard anything about it, just all of a sudden, there was a deal. The museum was going to be in Central Park. It's not right, you know it's not right. I have had a lot of phone calls, a lot of people asking me, I said, all of a sudden, there it was, a deal of whatever it was made, or however it was made, we'd like to know, we'd like to hear it, the story on it. Thank you.
Margaret, I think we discussed this last week, the 2 million dollars, Scott, do you want to, I'm just going to show up?
Yeah, we did discuss it, but the fact is, you were 2 million over budget until Verdugo Park. And, yeah, all of a sudden, you were 2 million over, over budget, it was 16 million within the budget, then they said, oh, we're going to be 2 million over, and it ended up being to use for the Central Park renovation. There was only 350,000, I have the figures, I got them from the city clerk. So, I mean, I know, I read the figures, and I know what it was. And I don't, you know, I was here that night, and I have the minutes in that meeting, so I very well know what was said that night.
Thank you, Mr. Grapetian.
I just want to, I just want to address the issue of development impact fees, and South Glendale versus North, because this is what I hear every day. The gentleman sitting in front of you, he tells me, you spend all the money in South Glendale. You're sitting over there, you tell me, all the money in North Glendale. If you look at the way that I was fighting for development impact fees, including many of the council members, almost all of us, we said that development impacted South Glendale, the fees has, have to be spent in South Glendale. I pushed for soccer fields for South Glendale, I pushed for more parks in South Glendale, one lousy restroom I've been fighting for, for over a year in a park in South Glendale, because people needed it. They wanted shade structure, I go to every park and ask people what they need. I was fighting for it, there is no other reason for it, because people needed it in South Glendale. Shade structures in Maple Park, we are completely rehabbing Palmer Park, we did the Seridos Park, there is a big plan of 12 million dollars for Fremont Park, they're all in South Glendale. Most of these development impact fees are going to, hopefully soon, in my lifetime, to redo or, or build new parkland in schoolyards that the public can use in South Glendale. One is Columbus School. So I, I really would appreciate it, I understand your position on a museum being in Central Park or not, but by... Park or not, but by just saying, all the money went to North Glendale, it's not right. I mean, it's not right, and it's not fair, because we've been fighting for these fees to stay in South Glendale. And we hear it, I hear, I live in North Glendale, I hear it every day from North Glendale people, oh, you spent all the money in South, and we didn't get anything. There is no South or North to me, I want to do the right thing, and I vote me to my conscience, doesn't matter what. I, you know, I don't look at it in a different way, I just look at where the need is, and that's where we spent the money. And we did a lot of things, and as far as Verdugo Park, I don't know what, where that issue is coming from, but we want to add parkland to that Central Park area. So wait until the plans come out, and you will see, you will have more, right now it's a one and a half acres, it will be more than that when we're done with the design of it. So I think, I think we need to be fair when we just come up and say, oh, you spent all the money in North. I don't think that's fair. And you know I love you and respect you, Margaret, but I disagree with your opinion on this issue.
I have the minutes.
And I, yeah, and, thank you. All right. Next item, adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Is there new business?
Move to adjourn.